Our mission statement, our mission is to deliver high-quality services essential to maintaining a safe and sustainable community. We commit to doing this cost-effectively with integrity and transparency. Welcome, everybody. Could we call the roll, please?
Can you repeat that, councilmember Whiting?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Please turn it up. We can't hear you.
I'm here.
Okay. Councilmember Lehman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here. Welcome back, Councilor Contreras. Glad you're with us tonight. Item number two, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, unmasking, and wearing the flag of the Constitution of America.
Thank you. Item number three, Mr. Reynolds?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We're very honored tonight to have Mr. David Unmack, who is in charge of the League of Minnesota Cities, who has a special presentation for the city of Shakopee. Dave, please. Yes, please.
Welcome.
Mayor Mars, can I take my mask off? I'll keep it on if protocol.
You can take it off if you wish.
I will if I don't mind.
We're more than six feet.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Bill, members of the Shakopee City Council that are on Zoom, I have met or know many of you and I have some of you for quite a long time. It's a privilege to be here. I was driving into this meeting just a few short minutes ago and can say that it's a factoid that I've been in every city council chamber in the city of Shakopee's head since the early 1980s and made many presentations in the old council chambers in my previous employment with Scott County. But I'm here for a different reason. As Bill said, I'm the executive director of the League of Minnesota Cities, and I want to congratulate the city of Shakopee. They received a City of Excellence Award in 2020. Normally, we give these awards out at our annual conference. Our annual conference was canceled this year, as you know, due to COVID experiences. We did not do a virtual annual conference. So my staff and I are going throughout the state delivering these awards personally to each city that received them. Last night, we were in Lakeville delivering the James F. Miller Leadership Award to Justin Miller. Today, we're here for the city of Shakopee. Congratulations to the department, the police department, that submitted the application. I had a chance to review the information, and the police representative certainly can talk about this in more detail. But I just want to highlight why this was, why this received an award, because the process and the mechanics were just outstanding. The statement of the problem, credit card fraud, was clear. It was pretty obvious based on the data that I read in the background. Then the intention, the process was extremely thorough. The collaborative process that the city of Shakopee undertaken to make this happen was excellent, was excellent compared to other business models that I see. But in addition to that, the outcomes were outstanding. Community inclusiveness was excellent. High school and businesses and others in the community was outstanding. The results, savings of money for the departments, savings of money for the businesses, was really, really good. All of these things led up to obviously clear measurements and benchmarks. You had actual dollars that you had. You had performance evaluations that took place. But most importantly, and this is what, and I'm not on the committee, I don't make the selection, but things we look for is best practice. Can this, can this be a best practice for other cities? And clearly, it has been. In the application, it noted that there's been other cities that have tried it. And in the summary of the application, it was noted it was first in the nation. So that's pretty darn cool. And it also helps for me because I know Chief Tate, and I, so I'm not close anymore. But so when I see the city of Shakopee wins, or people that I win, doing these really innovative and creative things, I'm even more proud. So on behalf of the League of Minnesota Cities, on behalf of my staff and my board and all 833 members, congratulations to the city, the police department, for a very innovative and creative award that has long-lasting impacts in your community, but just as important, it's going to have long-lasting impacts in other communities. For that, it's clearly worthy of a Certificate of Excellence Award in 2020. Mayor, I have a plaque I want to give. I can give it to you or to...
Oh, please, give it to Jay.
Okay. All right, Jay, hit the second.
Just back on. So I can't shake your hand, but I can maybe fist bump you. Congratulations, Jay, City of Excellence Award, population 20 or more, credit card ordinance, League of Minnesota Cities.
Thank you very much, sir.
Absolutely.
Well, Dave Unmack, the League of Minnesota Cities, thank you for bestowing this award on our community. Our police department really deserves full credit for this. This was an internal, organic policy that was developed. After a year of study, they came to the council with an idea, and they wanted to implement that. We, as a council, approved it, but we also wanted to see the results after a year. The retailers were finally on board. It did take some time because they had to adjust as well. But to see the results of saving some money for our department, seeing that particular aspect of that crime, I think go from 25 to 28 types of crime, all the way down to one in one year, shows that it was very effective. And to be recognized by the League of Minnesota Cities with the City of Excellence Award is certainly a point of pride for our community, and I take it very personally. I've been involved in the city a long time, and I don't know if we've ever won one of those before. But thank you very much. I tip my hat to the league, tip my hat to our police force. It's the second award we've won as well. We won a national one. So great to be recognized. And I do hear that our phone is ringing for other communities asking, inquiring about our new ordinance. So thank you. Others want to comment? Councilor Whiting?
Oh, thank you. This is, this is a great opportunity for other cities to take on this type of ordinance. And I'm wondering if we brought it to scale, since it is, won an award, and it's been great. You know, the thing that really concerned me was that it wasn't the people doing the crime that didn't like this ordinance, it was actually the retailers that were pushing back. And so I, I think it was a really good collaborative effort. But I would be curious if we can see if other communities would be interested in this.
Good. Mr. Mayor, too, if I can address that.
Yes, Mr. Reynolds?
It has been through scale, essentially through all of the administrators. Once we got the results back, Councilor Whiting, we pushed that out, and everyone was looking at it. And I do know that other communities are very seriously thinking, if they haven't already, implementing it as well.
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I just wanted to point out that one of the issues when we first looked at this was what it does to the consumer, what kind of extra processes or hardships it might put onto a consumer. And really, from my perspective, that the requirements from the consumer standpoint were so minimal that, you know, I'll use my wife as an example, Christmas time, she takes, you know, 500 bucks or whatever and goes to Target and buys a whole bunch of gift cards and gives them out at Christmas. She doesn't have a problem with showing who she is in doing that. And, and that's all that's required. So it's really not an onus on the consumer. It might be on the criminal, but that's, that should be. So job well done to the police department and the council for approving this. And did you say, Mayor, that we're down to just one classification, so the results were very well?
Yes, sir. That, we had, this last reporting period, we had one crime of this type that occurred. And I believe, if I remember correctly, the ordinance wouldn't have done anything in regards to that particular crime. So it was a crime of that genre, but we don't think the ordinance would have impacted it.
Thank you for your comments. Others? Councilor Contreras?
Yes, a couple of things. Thank you to the League of Minnesota for the recognition. Great work to our police department. And just, you know, just wanted to say, it's, it's a great way of being a role model to our, to other cities. So great job to everybody. Thank you.
Councilor Brennan?
Yep, I also want to thank the league for giving this award to our city. I think that this was an opportunity to do something different and creative, to solve a problem. And I know that it was well thought out, and it seemed like really a no-brainer fix for, to happen. So I want to thank the Shakopee PD, City Administrator Reynolds and the staff, and really the rest of the council for, for doing this.
Thank you all again very, very much, and thanks for the presentation tonight.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We don't have a box checked that we do for these awards, but if we did, Shakopee would have checked every one of the boxes. That's the biggest compliment I can give you on this, on this award. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Good, great. All right, moving ahead then to item number four, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Counselors? Councilor Brennan?
I make a motion to approve the agenda for October 6, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the agenda and a second by Councilor Contreras. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote?
Councilmember Whiting.
Aye.
Councilmember Lehman.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. The agenda's been approved. Item number five, consent agenda. Are there any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
All right. Thank you. Counselors? Councilor Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Contreras for the consent agenda as stated. No other questions? Before we would vote, we would read the consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for 6 October of 2020. 4A1 approves the 15 September city council minutes. 4A2 approves the application and grants a tobacco license to Easy Street Smoke Shop LLC located at 1345 Heather Street. 4A3 approves the contract with Tyranny for $53,577.21 for fire station number one training room technology upgrades. 4B1 approves a contract with RJM Construction for $32,999 with a $3,000 contingency for installation of sliding doors to rink number two. 4C1 approves resolution number R2020-TAC118, authorizing the execution of a contract with the state of Minnesota for two years of funding for the building official training program. 4D1 approves resolution number R2020-TAC115, which accepts the COPS School Violence Prevention Program grant agreement. 4D2 adopts resolution number R2020-TAC116, which accepts the 2021 Towards Zero Deaths Grant Agreement. 4E1 authorizes the execution of a construction cooperative agreement with Scott County for the CSAH 78 Improvements Project at the Zumbro Avenue and Amelia Trail Intersections. And finally, 4E2 approves the 2021 sidewalk and trail snow removal routes.
I have a motion on the table and a second for the consent agenda. The consent items have been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion by voice vote?
Councilmember Whiting.
Aye.
Councilmember Lehman.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. The consent agenda has been passed. We will move on then to item number six. Now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Mr. Reynolds, have we received any public comment?
We have not, sir.
Seeing none then, we would move ahead. Business removed from consent, we had none. And then we would, item number eight, I would entertain a motion to recess to the EDA meeting. Councilor Contreras?
I'd like to make a motion to recess to the EDA meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recess for EDA. Any further discussion? Discussion? By voice vote?
Councilmember Whiting.
Aye.
Councilmember Lehman.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. We stand in recess. Mr. President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call to order the October 6th meeting of the Shakopee Economic Development Authority. Madam Secretary, please make note of the role.
Second on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Mr. Lehman?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
With a second by Brennan. Any other comments? Discussion? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Lehman.
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan.
Aye.
Commissioner Contreras.
Aye.
Commissioner Mars.
Aye.
President Whiting.
All right. All right. Next on our agenda today is consent business that includes the minutes.
Mr. President?
Jay, you're, Jay, you're cutting out.
All right. You hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Are we on item three, please? Consent business? Mr. Lehman?
Mr. President, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second by Contreras. Any discussion? 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 Please call the roll.
Commissioner Lehman.
Aye.
Commissioner Contreras.
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan.
Aye.
Commissioner Mars.
Aye.
President Whiting.
Aye. All right, now we'll move on to item four, general business. 4A, contract for contingency extension for MWF for yearly property purchase. Mr. Kurski or Ms. Eddington?
Mr. President, board members, so you previously approved this. Our attorney worked, they actually wanted a much simpler agreement. This is just a quick extension to make sure they can get through the state approval process. So they asked for a simple resolution, which our attorney has drawn up.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. President? Mr. Mars, go ahead. Yeah. Mr. Kurski, has this, MWF made any progress in their scoring? Did they, are they making improvements to get closer to the, any scoring that, for this?
Mr. President and commissioners, they, they haven't actually been scored yet. So the state delayed the actual scoring until December. That's why they need the extension. So they still have to have site control to be able to apply and get approved in December. So because of COVID, they actually canceled the last round.
Thank you. I understand. Any further discussion or questions? Mr. Mars? Mr. President, I would offer resolution number E2020-013, extending MWF's contract contingent period until January 31, 2021.
Second, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second by Contreras. Any further discussion? Mr. Lehman?
Mr. President, I just had one question. Are we extending the contract for the property with the city? Is that what we're extending?
Mr. President, board members, so the EDA currently has a contract with MWF that would expire at the end of the year because they will not know whether or not they've gotten their award until the end of the year. We're extending it basically 30 days.
Right. Are we extending the agreement on the property for that purpose, for that development?
Mr. President, board members, so they, they already have the zoning and the project set to go. This is just their purchase of the property. I believe it was a half a million dollar purchase price for, to the EDA for that parcel. So all we're doing is extending their time period for the purchase.
That's what I was asking. Thank you.
Any further questions? Any further buyers lining up for that property? I think we got 30 days then. All right. Please call the roll. I think we have the motion and second.
Commissioner Lehman.
Aye.
Commissioner Contreras.
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan.
Aye.
Commissioner Mars.
Aye.
President Whiting.
All right. Next on our agenda is item 4B, the Second Amendment to the Ruber Bluff Agreement with GON companies and other agreements.
Mr. Kurski, I believe?
Mr. President, board members, so we've done numerous amendments. They are getting ready to close. And so the city attorney, Eddington, worked with the various banks attorneys and the developers attorneys to actually combine everything back and to just have a Second Amendment, which combines all the previous amendments that were done or contemplated into one final amendment, and also included the reimbursement of the environmental and the demolition costs that have been completed on the property. So this kind of wraps everything up. They are preparing a closure in about a week on the property. Everything's been cleared. I noticed today, when I drove by, the silt fence is up, so they're getting ready to start construction.
Mr. Kurski, all those amendments and all these times we brought this back for adjustments and things, the bank didn't like that, and they want it all boiled into one document? Is that what you're trying to say?
Mr. President, board members, that's correct. So this will be recorded, and you can already see it's a fairly large document. Having all the other amendments gave some heartburn with the two lenders on the project. So working with the council for the developer and Ms. Eddington worked with the council for the banks to get everything kind of wrapped up into one package.
Any questions of staff or Ms. Eddington?
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Mr. Mars.
Just this consolidation of all this amendments into one final one, this still secures the repayment of money that we have out, as well as the TIF dollars, correct?
Mr. President, board members, yes. So there'll be a cash payment at closing for some of the properties that were purchased along with the demolition costs and any other associated costs that then are, which made this complicated, there's actually two TIF notes, one to back to the EDA for its original acquisition and relocation of some of those properties. And then there's a separate TIF note to the developer for its construction.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one.
Mr. Lim, please.
Somewhere in this long contract, I read that what we're basically approving is to authorize the economic development director and the mayor to wrap this all up and whatever they come up with, we're agreeing to.
Mr. Kurski, would you like to address that?
Mr. President, board members, I will take a shot, and then we can have Ms. Eddington, of course, jump in. There is an assignment by a bank that's actually loaning the money on the TIF note, that they are still negotiating that today. And all it's saying is it should reflect similarly to the other bank note that's in here. And since we didn't have it, since they need that to close, we left that up to the city attorney, the president, Mr. Whiting, and the executive director to sign. And Ms. Eddington feel happy to jump in.
Mr. President, members of the commission, there are two banks involved, Old National and Crown Bank. Old National was able to get us their subordination agreement and their collateral assignment. We've reviewed it, and it's in front of you today. Crown Bank was unable to get that done before the meeting deadline, and that is why we added that additional language to provide for the president, staff, and myself to review those documents, to make sure that they were in line with what you would normally do in a subordination agreement and a collateral assignment of a TIF note. And that's why we added that language, because we couldn't get those documents from Crown Bank in time.
Further questions, Mr. Lehman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How much do we have invested in this property up to this point?
The city's, uh, TIF note's just over a million dollars, so that's, we're in the first pay. I believe we get 23% of the TIF revenue. The, excuse me, the remainder goes to the developer.
Well, we bought these properties and two of the properties were a million dollars by themselves, so we've got cleanup costs from Met Council funds, we've got demolition costs. What's our total cost involved in this project as of today? If we were to say we're just going to put a for sale sign up on this property and start over?
Mr. President and Board members, I probably wouldn't do that since we already have a contract with the developer. But if you look at the costs we have currently in, there was about half a million dollars for the last properties that we acquired that'll be paid at the closing. There's a million, I think, $300,000 that is in the TIF note. There's a hundred thousand, $135,000 that went to federal loan for the demolition that'll be paid at the closing. And then there's about $10,000 remediation costs that will be reimbursed to us by, um, either through the deed grant agreement we have or through the Met Council agreement. The rest of those funds, um, from a cash flow standpoint go, the developer will spend the remediation costs, submit bills to us, we will not pay them. We will submit those bills to either deed to the Met Council, they will cut us a check and then we will pay that back to the developer. So we are not out any of those funds because the developer has to front all that money in advance. That's why there are two banks involved in this transaction. There's one that's doing the actual construction loan and then there's a bank doing the bridge loan, which is Crown Bank, that cover all those other costs.
Anything further?
And just, Mr. President?
Please, Mr. Mars, go ahead.
To dovetail on Counselor Lehman, I mean, we're going to get some dollars back at closing, right? That aren't true TIF dollars, we're going to get them upfront.
Mr. President and, um, Board members, that's correct.
Right, okay.
What was the total tax, uh, value of this property once complete? Did we have a figure that was estimated?
Mr. President and Board members, there is a, uh, agreement in there that Scott County, the tax assessment, will have to sign that it's a minimum assessment agreement. We did the same thing on the enclave project to ensure that we would get our money back. And I believe, um, Ms. Eddington, it's 24 million, I believe?
Um, I'm just looking it up now and it is, um, let's see here. It's 25,950,000 and that will help us shore up, um, to make sure that the tax increment is sufficient to pay both the developer and the EDA back.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Mr. President and Board members, and our estimate is the, that's the tax value, the actual building and permit value will be higher than that. They're footing on foundation permits already in, and I believe it was 1.6 or 1.7 million.
And this is just the tax value to keep the TIF alive, but, uh, the, the future, the future, who knows? But, uh, the development that could go along with this, the co-development and the, and the costs that come back to the city that from, from just cleaning up this site, I think are immense, I think, cornerstone for our community and kind of a start for that whole corridor on the riverfront. So I'm excited for this project and, uh, there is some upfront, upfront costs, but, uh, you know, in the end, you kind of invest in your community, so. Any further questions that, I think we, do we have, uh, everything we need here? Do we have a motion, please? Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer resolution, uh, number E2020-014, approving a Second Amendment for the contract for private development with Goggin Development LLC, a collateral assignment and subordinate of development agreement and other documents connected with the development of the River Bluff redevelopment property. And, uh, this is going to be a fabulous project when it's up and running.
Second.
Motion is second by Brennan. Any further discussion? 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 Please call the roll.
Commissioner Lehman.
Negative.
Commissioner Contreras.
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan.
Aye.
Commissioner Mars.
Aye.
President Whiting.
Aye. All right, thank you for that, uh, appreciate it. Thanks for your help, um, Ms. Eddington, as always, and we'll see you soon. Maybe you're sticking around. Thank you. All right, uh, next on our agenda is item five.
I can't hear you, Jay.
Is there any questions on the bill list? Seeing none, uh, we'll move on to item six. Ms. Contreras?
I make a motion to adjourn to Wednesday, November 4th, 2020 at 7:00 PM.
Second?
Motion is second by Brennan. Any discussion? 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 Please call the roll.
Commissioner Lehman.
Aye.
Commissioner Contreras.
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan.
Aye.
Commissioner Mars.
Aye.
President Whiting.
Aye. We stand adjourned.
Okay. We'll reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council meeting for October 6th, 2020. We have just completed our EDA meeting and we're reconvening on, uh, item number, workshop number 10A, the Shakopee Public Utilities. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, we essentially wanted to bring forward a workshop to discuss, uh, essentially some questions that the public have had, uh, and some concerns. And before we start anything, I think it's important to recognize that when we're talking about a portion of this, the portion of this is about the referendum, but more importantly, uh, it, it's broader than the referendum. And so when we talk about the referendum, the city has a responsibility to educate, but we cannot advocate for one decision or the other. Uh, as always, I encourage all residents to do their homework and make a determination as to how they're going to vote. With that being said, this body has had open discussion on all these issues for the last three years. It's been open, it's been transparent, there have been open discussions, there have been votes on these issue for the public to take a look at, there have been discussions on multiple fronts and avenues when we're talking about these issues, all done within the public realm. And I encourage the public in general to go back and look at all of those, uh, recordings where you can see for yourself what did and did not occur and what the decision of council were. Regardless of any referendum, what we're talking about is an issue of accountability. And SPUC is an organization, whether this referendum passes or does not pass, so essentially, let's put that referendum issue aside, SPUC as an organization, as a public organization, as an organization that is owned by the City of Shakopee, SPUC has a responsibility to be just as transparent as the city is. It has a responsibility to be upfront with the public and not hide things from them, as we know has occurred in the past. It has a responsibility to be customer friendly and customer forward thinking. It has a responsibility to be fiscally prudent with its finances. And when there are questions that arise in regards to accounts, to openly explain to the public and to the city if necessary, what those accounts show. Regardless of the referendum, it has a responsibility to follow the law, which hasn't occurred in the past. And regardless of the referendum, it has the responsibility to be accountable. As I said before, the city has a responsibility to provide factual information on the referendum to the public, much like the school district has done with their referendum. We are not here to advocate for a vote, yes or no, on the referendum. We will provide factual information and then the public can then make their choice. Well, why are we doing this education? Well, very simply, following passage by the council on the referendum, there, there were some real questions and some legitimate questions that came in from several areas regarding the city. The first thing was, why, why was the city doing this? And, and, and honestly, we don't fully expect everyone to know the history of why that occurred, uh, because frankly, not everybody is watching our videos or watching our meetings. The second is, well, what are the city's actual concerns? And then finally, what's going to happen if the referendum is successful? And so our goal tonight, frankly, is to answer those questions. Uh, this is a workshop, it's designed to be not as, as formal as normal, uh, and I encourage all of you, uh, and, and the members of the public, that if you have questions, concerns, issues, you know, feel free to stop any of the presenters tonight as we work through this, uh, and then let's address those questions as they come up. We have sourced documents for everything that we're going to tell you. Uh, everything is factually based. And our goal is to ensure that these questions that I just outlined are answered and ultimately that we once again encourage all members of the public to do their own personal education before they make a decision on this referendum. So, with that said, if we can go ahead, Andy. What we're going to cover here today is a very brief historical perspective, the, the, it's going to be one slide, so I can assure you it's very brief. Uh, we're also going to talk about how we got to the ballot question in 2020. How did the city council come to determine that a referendum, uh, was necessary to bring in front of the voters this ultimate question? We're going to review the city's concerns and we're also going to talk about the documents and the evidence that we have to back up these concerns. And finally, we're going to outline what's going to occur if the ballot, uh, question is successful. A very brief historical perspective. Uh, the City of Shakopee has been in the utilities business for a very long time. It started in 1900 when there was no service here in the City of Shakopee. It was a very small community on the river and there was no electrical service. So the city council agreed that if the voters approved a $10,000, uh, amount to spend on it, they would commit $5,000 of their own funds to move forward and, and put together an electrical generation plant. That was successful. Uh, by 1912, it operated as a city department with water, sewer, and electric, all included. In March of 1951, the city changed oversight to SPUC, uh, the Shakopee Public Utilities Commission by council vote. It was not an easy decision. There was a lot of controversy. If you want some historical perspective, uh, please review that. Uh, it's quite, uh, interesting to say the least. And it was actually vetoed the first time around by the mayor at the time. Uh, then it was brought forward, the mayor's concerns were, were taken care of, and then, uh, the city council by vote created SPUC. Now, why is that important? Because subsequently, the state law changed and the state legislature determined it was no longer going to be acceptable for the, uh, city councils in the state to determine whether or not, uh, the utility should be either with the city or with, uh, with the commission. And if it was to be returned back to the city, it would have to go to a referendum as opposed to just simply having the city council, uh, address that. Frankly, that's probably not a bad idea in a lot of respects because it, it does protect from the ebb and flow and, and what I call the, the, the hotness of the times with political issues. So it certainly, there's, there's certainly some, uh, some merit to that. But it did change. The city council specifically had voted for it and then the state said, city council, you no longer have that authority. If it's going to happen, the voters have to decide. You've seen this slide in the past, uh, and, and it, it really is critically important because, um, the city staff has had no interest in getting involved in SPUC issues since I've been here and I know before me. And anytime there was ever a SPUC issue that came before city staff or complaints, my response was always very simple and always the same. This is not a city issue, this is a SPUC issue. You should direct, you should address SPUC issues with SPUC directly. Uh, and, and the reality was, is because frankly, the city staff, the city council had no ability to do anything in regards to what SPUC, uh, was doing or the controversies that were occurring, uh, because of, of their operation. And so my goal was simply to insulate us as an organization from that. Uh, if you have a controversy with SPUC, we're not the organization to deal with it, you need to go to SPUC. Well, that changed. Uh, and it's important to understand why that changed and, uh, it really was a culmination of events. Uh, all of you and council and members of the public that are watching may or may not be familiar, but, you know, uh, it was certainly covered in the newspaper. The first issue, and it should be important to note that these were issues that we had heard about from individuals, ratepayers, uh, customers, developers, business owners. Again, none of this stuff was new and I know that a lot of you received the phone calls and, on council on many of these issues prior to the, to the, uh, phone calls you received from, uh, the Willie McCoy's Restaurant Group. And in 2018, Willie McCoy's had some real concerns in regards to the charges and water connection fees that they were being assigned by SPUC. They specifically brought forward to council on December 4th, uh, a, a request to be relieved from SPUC fees. And my position as city administrator was very simple. This is not, it's not a city issue. If you have an issue, you should address it with SPUC. But what Willie McCoy's wanted to do is essentially have the city subsidize the SPUC fees. And, and my response as city administrator was very simple. The issues are the SPUC fees. It is not the city's place to subsidize those fees and if you have an issue, you go with SPUC. Uh, at, at that meeting, uh, the council specifically tabled that to give staff to find a solution and that was where staff was, uh, directed to start looking into this issue and, 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 and working it. And that we did. Uh, there was an extensive review of documents and, and, uh, about six weeks of work, frankly, that, that at least five of my department heads worked on in regards to trying to find, first of all, some answers to a lot of questions, uh, some of which we'll go into a little later, but more importantly, trying to find a solution and trying to work with SPUC to find out how we could fix this. And in one of my emails to Mr. Crooks, I, I said, let's figure out a way to fix this. And so these issues frankly are no longer the city, uh, city staff's issues, but are SPUC issues again. Let's figure out how to make this work. Next slide, please. Also, very soon after that, we had the issue with the splash pad. As many of you know, this was an $80,000 splash pad that was donated to the city. Uh, and as part of that, you know, obviously, we needed to have water hooked up to it. Uh, in the past, I've heard concerns that, uh, that, that SPUC never really actually said that they were looking to charge $211,365, $211,365 for this. Well, that simply is not correct. We have, uh, the emails in regards to that, that specifically show that's exactly what they said. Of course, they also said we could drill our own well, which is a whole nother issue that we're going to talk about a little later. The idea of drilling a, a well, uh, which is something that they had also floated with other organizations that didn't want to pay the fees, uh, clearly had well had protection issues. And, uh, Mr. Lily Hogg is going to address that a little later. And finally, the other issue that came around the same time was the city comp water plan, which was part of the city's comp plan. And city staff became aware that without any coordination, without any review, without any, uh, contact with city staff, SPUC submitted the water plan directly to the Met Council. Uh, we requested, first of all, the ability to review any plans that went forward, which did not occur. And again, we have documentary evidence from Mr. Lily Hogg that specifically requests from Mr. Crooks for that to happen. We then requested the report after it had been submitted from SPUC. We did not get it from SPUC, we actually had to get it from the state. Uh, and as part of that, we, we then were, had the ability to review that plan and essentially had to submit a three-page review of all of the errors, inconsistencies, and wrong information that was part of that, which frankly is just, I, I don't understand. information that was part of that, which frankly is just, I, I don't understand. It seems to me it would have been much easier and, and a better process if the city was a partner in that from the very beginning. But that is not what occurred. On March 12th of 2019, we had a joint meeting with the utility. And our purpose was to try to get some information at that point specifically about why these fees appeared to be so high when it came to water connection and water trunk fees. And the real issue from us just looking at initially is that it was higher than almost anyone else that we could find. And in our comparable cities, I believe the next highest was half the fees that we actually were looking at from the utility. Following that meeting, staff put together a, a follow-on request for more information to try to figure out why these fees were high and some other information. And that was sent on June 17th of 2019. SPUC, the commission, just refused to answer it at all. And unfortunately voted frankly just to table it and to take no action, which required the city council to authorize a joint letter from Mayor Mars and Councilor Lehman on July 12th, 2019, which requested the letter to be answered without further delay. Why is this important? Well, this is just one of the questions of that June 7th letter. It's in the public domain and it's a very long letter with some real deep questions. But again, questions that were necessary to figure out what was occurring with the utility. And this is just one of these questions. And this is why it's so important to understand why we ask these questions.
Can I interrupt, sir?
Oh, absolutely.
Is, is Matt Lehman still online?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm watching.
Okay, thanks.
So one of the questions essentially was talking about actions that were taken in 2003 where a SPUC consultant recommended that the water trunk charge be increased from $567 to $2,045 to fund two new water treatment plants. Our questions were very simple. Were these plants in the SPUC capital improvement plan? If not, when would they be added? Fees had been collected since 2003 for these plants with no apparent planning. Had there been any studies or other reports that outlined the plan for these plants or timeline for their construction? And finally, had the system infrastructure requirements since that time facilitated one or two treatment facilities? These are incredibly important because this is a graph that shows how those fees increased. And you'll see in 2003, there was a 263.1%, I believe, raise specifically in these fees to fund two water treatment plants. And since 2003, you can see the exponential growth in these fees. Now, as an aside, some of the information being put out by the utility in regards to this referendum talks about that, oh, the city is going to build these water treatment plants and you're going to be charged or you're going to be, well, no. Residents of Shakopee, the utility has been collecting fees since 2003 for this specific issue. It was recommended by a, a consultant. The consultant actually said you can do one or two treatment plants. The commission voted on it. They voted to do for two treatment plants and they started collecting the fees. And nothing was done. Yes?
What, it went like from like 500 and some dollars? What was the, what was the jump in 2003? The slide before.
Yeah, go back one slide. And you can see it went from 567.
567.
To 2045. Again, this is all, this is all factual information. So that's why that particular question and why the questions on June 7th that SPUC initially refused to answer was so important. Well, clearly that had an impact on a majority of the council. And on June 17th of 2019, city council asked legal counsel to prepare a memo on the process to be followed for bringing SPUC under city management. This was all done in the open. The discussion was had in the open. And, and, and you know, there was no hiding. There was no nefarious plot. It was all very open discussion. Legal counsel delivered that to the city council on July 2nd council meeting and outlined what it would take. And, and that's when staff frankly began to plan for ultimately if the council was going to have a, a, a resolution to have this question on the ballot. So the city's areas of concern are expansive. We're not talking one or two issues. And so for those that are so concentrated on one or two issues, I, I, I really don't believe that any one or two issues or three issues or four issues would put us to where we are today. What it is, is a culmination of unaccountability that the staff and the city council witnessed. We've talked about the water connection and water trunk charges. We've also talked about the refusal to answer repeated quest for public info. We, we now have confirmation from SPUC's own internal investigation, talking about the illegal secret commissioner only packets to basically hide info from the public. We also had the issue later that came in in regards to the unilateral changing of the pilot, which is the payment in lieu of taxes. I'm not going to go too much into detail with that, but it's another one of those issues that obviously legal counsel was involved in, put together a memo talking about the history of this particular issue, talked about how it had always been a collaborative effort. And then SPUC unilaterally acted even after we had requested there to be a working together to solve the issue. Some of these other things will be covered by, by future speakers. Comprehensive water plan submission to the state without city review or comment, I've already discussed. Water safety and quality issues, Mr. Lily Hogg will go into detail. Salary state law violations, again, not because of the city, but the own, SPUC's own investigation. Utility salaries ranked highest among any employment sector in Scott County. That's true. Non-factual claims of lowest water charges. And that's when you even factor in that all of the other cities in Carver County, all the other cities in Scott County, all of our comparable cities all treat or have treated water. Lack of economic development initiatives, a need for modernization, modernization in operations, HR and finance, and frankly, much better customer service. Benefits of collaboration and efficiencies of service combination, which is something that we think from a staff perspective is, is, is a low hanging fruit that's just waiting to be addressed. And Mr. Reinhardt, Reinhardt will go into detail in regards to lost investment income revenue due to investment strategies and fund accountability. So what's the plan moving forward if this was to, if this was to occur? If the voters said yes, then essentially, you know, at this point after, and I'm, I'm sure you will have an opportunity to analyze the documents after Mr. Reinhardt presents his information, I am very confident without a hesitation that we can initially save several million dollars a year, period. It's important that the public understand that the public service delivery will not change. It's the same people, the same trucks, the same services. What is changing is the leadership. An accountable leadership with city council people that can be voted out of office, that can be recalled if necessary. Something that the appointed individuals for the commission cannot, once they're appointed, they're there, period. A modernization of processes, equipment and infrastructure. And Mr. Kurski is going to talk a little bit about that and what the city did when we moved into this facility and some of the things that we have done and how SPUC can also follow suit. A better coordination of capital improvements and projects. Improved oversight and accountability. Increased transparency and following of the law. A focus on customer service that has been a mantra of this organization for the last six years and it will continue to be. We will contract an electrical manager for the short, short term to evaluate and, and at the end of that period, listen to their recommended improvements. And we will analyze and plan to address water needs. That's how the city will move forward. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our next, our next person. All right. Mr. Reinhardt.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Nate Reinhardt, Finance Director for the city. I just wanted to discuss some potential, let me go to the next slide here. I just wanted to discuss some potential opportunities from a finance perspective. On the last two cities where I've served as Finance Director for the past decade plus, I've worked with utilities including water, sewer, storm drainage, and that includes the city of Waseka where they had both water, sewer, and electricity. So I'm very familiar with utility billing and financial operations and it's not uncommon to see utilities as part of city government. I just wanted to take this opportunity to describe my approach if the ballot measure is approved. I do view this as a chance to collaborate, bring resources and people together, cross-functional for the betterment of Shakopee as a whole. Staff development, working with utility billing and SPUC and city finance staff will provide an opportunity to cross-train employees in these different functions and develop new skills, which I've seen the importance of this during COVID where we've needed people capable of backfilling, which is very essential to continue our operations. Transparency, we want financial information to be available and accessible to elected officials and members of the public and we want information to be accurate. Financial audit with some of the concerns expressed and lack of being able to get financial information. We do plan on having a new independent audit firm conduct and audit of finances. It's always a, a red flag when you see unethical acts from leadership of the organization. So I think it's prudent to review the financial operations even further. And then we will work on merging policies, procedures, and technologies with emphasis on internal controls, efficiency, removing duplicated efforts, enhancing the operation internally and to our customers. The end result will be cost savings, more efficient and effective financial management There's a great opportunity to leverage technology. The city has invested in software that currently doesn't exist at SPUC. A couple of examples being our tungsten accounts payable software, which is a electronic workflow software. All invoices the city receives are either emailed or scanned and at a central location and routed for coding and approval from various departments, improving our controls and efficiency, as well as timeliness of processing invoices. The city utilizes Laserfish as an electronic database for our financial records and agreements, making them quickly accessible and retrievable and in compliance with state laws for records retention. It is my understanding that time cards are still being completed manually. Moving to the city's electronic timekeeping will make this process more efficient and accurate. And then financial software, the city has JD Edwards financial system that is used by cities throughout the metro and is a very robust system. In comparison, SPUC uses Dafron, which I actually had to Google because I wasn't familiar with the software previously. But this would be an opportunity to bring everything under the same financial system. And then the last two bullets there, I just wanted to just kind of share a couple of experiences that could be further explored. Automated meter reading software. Looking at the utilities organizational chart, there are four dedicated full-time staff to reading meters. Most cities utilize an automated meter reading technology that would allow reads to be obtained either through drive-by or a fixed read system that would be read by gateways placed on city infrastructure such as buildings or water towers. I would say we're, we're probably behind on the technology. One of the additional benefits to a fixed read system outside of not having to dedicate the four full, full-time employees to reading meters is that when properties are sold, the utility billing staff could pull up real-time meter read information from their computers without having to send additional staff out. And then the, the last one there, in Brooklyn Center, we had a payment portal called Invoice Cloud, which a large number of metro cities also use the same software. But it did allow customers to pay online with check, credit card, set up reoccurring payments, view billing history, et cetera. One of the popular features with that was pay by text where you could get bill notifications. You could even respond to pay your bill via text. You'd text back, okay, pay, and it would pay. It also had an automated phone, phone system, which allowed customers to pay outside the normal hours, so 24/7. They could pay weekends or holidays. They had the option to choose English or Spanish. So overall, a very well-received system from our customers. And really the best part of that software was it was actually had lower processing costs than our previous software. So we were actually providing these more options as well as saving our customers or as well as saving the city money. With the volume of bills and payments that the utility has, whenever you can speed up a transaction or even lower a transaction cost by just a, a small amount, it does add up to large savings over time and, and I've been successful in finding ways to do that. Aside here with the utilities organizational chart, we would combine the utility finance and billing functions with the city finance department and those staff would be under the city finance director, which is me, effectively combining the 10 SPUC employees with myself and three other finance staff. Additionally, the customer relations coordinator and the three customer service reps, which are listed on the right-hand side, I did not highlight those as I'm not exactly sure what their roles would be and I didn't want to presume where they'd fall on a combined org, org chart. So I, I do believe there's a great opportunity to improve efficiency and save money with the two organizations combined. There's likely much more than, that I haven't or we haven't thought about once we get into it, but just in finance operations, at least half a million. We will be eliminating the vacant finance director position, producing savings of over 200,000. Currently, because the two separate entities, we are required to have two separate audits. The audit would be part of the city audit. Savings and financial software, our general ledger and record keeping would be part of the single software, eliminating the need of the two organizations to have separate software to effectively do the, the same thing. And then continued process consolidation, banking, investments, budgeting, paying bills, paying employees. Financial reporting, audit, and capital improvement planning would all be consolidated and completed as one entity. I think as time goes on, we can achieve significant savings through attrition and a more efficient operation. And then lastly, just wanted to comment on long-term financial planning, combining those efforts into one process, better project coordination when it comes to infrastructure planning. And I know Mr. Lily Hogg will touch on this as well, but from a finance perspective, when determining timing, project financing, and reviewing ways to reduce project costs, being able to coordinate these projects together is, is, would be much more efficient. Here's a chart that provides a, an investment comparison of the two entities over the previous 10 years. The numbers are from the audited financial reports of the two entities, the city and SPUC. This chart shows that the cash and investments, if managed by the city, would expect an additional 400,000 of investment income per year, which is over 4 million over this 10-year span shown on the slide. The city follows the same statute when it comes to permitted investments, so we're very restrictive on what we can be, what we can invest in. Much of the, the cash that the utility does sit in either checking or short-term accounts and not really invested at all. These amounts are, are based on audited financial reports. Realistically, the amount is much, much higher since the cash balance of the city is at its highest point at year end after we receive our second, second half property tax settlement, which under calculates our true rate of return. But regardless, I think it kind of gets to the point that the investment strategy is definitely something that should be reviewed by the utility.
You're saying there that there, if they, they follow probably the same guidelines we follow as far as SLY, safety, liquidity, and yield. If they've, would have matched the city, they would have earned investment income of 400,000 per year?
Mayor and council members, they are restrict, or state statute restricts them to investing in the same type of instruments that the city can restrict it, invest in. Now, the city has a separate investment policy that is even more restrictive than state statute. I can't comment on what the.
That's right.
Investment policy is at SPUC, but a large majority of government organizations will, their investment policy will mimic the state statute because of the, it already is very restrictive. There just might be more, yeah.
And they could have made $4 million over 10 years.
Absolutely. My last slide here, I wanted to provide an estimate of what it costs on an annual basis to. to the taxpayers, ratepayers of Shakopee to separate the two entities. Again, I'm trying to be as conservative as possible with this estimate, but we did talk about the 400,000 in additional investment income, 500,000 in finance operational savings. We add in the elimination of the utilities directory at 250,000, 530,000 in duplicated services with the city's Public Works Department, which Mr. Lilahog will cover, and 100,000 in technology costs, which would be, could be much higher without knowing the environment. We are with duplication in the data center and reduction of redundant software. So conservatively, it costs taxpayers, ratepayers, 1.8 million a year to have the two organizations separate rather than one operating cohesive functional operation. There are many unknowns that could lead to potential greater savings, such as further identification of redundant software, overlap in equipment and vehicles, and combination of fleet management services, central garage, et cetera. And I think that is my last slide, but I do think it's relatively straightforward that consolidating the two entities, you would see some immediate elimination of duplicated efforts and then more as the systems are merged together as we continue down the road.
I, Mayor. That is great information and very positive and for the community. So I really want to thank Nate for putting that together. And I think the, one of your slides back away has talked about a deep audit to be completed and I agree. I had a chance to talk to the state auditor a couple of weeks ago and that was one of the conversations that we had when you have somebody who is just leaving the organization, who's had the issues that were reported in the investigation report. She said obviously it needs to have a very thorough investigation completed on it. So I think, you know, that is, that's just going to have to happen, you know, just to see where we're at and to make sure that we're going to be in a good position.
Mr. Reynolds?
And I would say that regardless, again, of the referendum, any new manager coming into that organization, just like I, if I came into a city that had some financial irregularities, it is important for that new manager to come in, if the referendum is not successful, to understand and have a clean slate so several years down the road, something doesn't come up and you're essentially leaving your manager out there hanging in the wind because it's difficult for them to be able to say, well, this happened before I was here. There really needs to be a complete and total audit prior to a new manager coming into that organization, just for the success of that new manager if the referendum is not successful.
Well, thank you Nate. I appreciate your analysis. I think there's been a lot of talk about if this was successful, that rates would go up. I think the last many slides here that really represented about cost savings and everybody's worried about the rates, no one's discussing raising rates. And we're talking about efficiencies and saving money and even they says today that someone was saying, oh, they saved $4 million on being debt-free. That's great. That's a savings. How about having another $4 million over the last 10 years by investing the money properly in a laddered format? That opportunity, everybody thinks it's, oh, it's about the money. It certainly isn't because all those funds are segregated to pay for certain things, the water connection charge, the water trunk charge, the operational price of the commodity. Those are all segregated funds, correct?
Mayor and council members, that is correct. So they follow the same accounting structure that we would, so it would be fund accounting as opposed to not so much fund accounting. But it's all baskets. So what do you collect money for is set aside or is typically designated for a specific purpose. In the case of property taxes, that obviously is city government, so it's more spread out. But the utility fees would remain with the utility.
And just to work on this for a short period of time and come up with an opportunity to save 1.7 million dollars for the organization on an annual basis, I think that's very significant. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor writing here.
Yes, Counselor.
Yeah, so Nate, thank you. The 1.8 million is a great start. You also talked about, you know, that fund when the water trunk charge were raised and we were supposed to fund the two water treatment plants. I think Mr. Reynolds talked about that. But have we looked at what that fund should be like if all that money went into that pot for that water treatment plant and what should be there? And do we know what is there for that capital improvement?
I'm unable to answer that question. I'm not sure without being able to obviously.
They have collected money. The money, there is money in the bank. People say, well, the water treatment would, if that occurred, would cause property taxes to go up. The utility has money, has been saying they've been planning for it and have money in the bank for that. Comes out of the water connection charge. So that's in the bank. That's a specialized restricted fund designed for water tanks and treatment.
Do we know what that fund is, that level of that fund is? Is that transparent? We can find that? Ms. Brennan might have that? I don't mean to have it now, but you could maybe find that?
I know at the end of the year was 14 million at December.
Thank you.
That's about right. All right. Other questions? Did you have any questions, Counselor Lehman, on this? On the financial part of it? I know that there's been talk of raising rates that hasn't even been discussed today. Okay, thank you. We have another speaker?
Yes, sir. Mr. Kurski here.
Welcome.
Mayor and Council, good evening. So we hear a lot of chatter, particularly in social media, about Shakopee's rates and how we're lower, very competitive. So we did an analysis based on 6,000 gallons of water per month, which is how we base our sewer charge. That's been going on for the past couple of years. So using the Met Council has a very nice calculator online. These are all of the cities that we looked at. You can see Shakopee is not the lowest. And the interesting thing is of all these cities up here, every one of them treats their water. So one of these cities, I think, has as many as four treatment plants. The highest one over there, they buy their water in bulk either from St. Paul or Minneapolis. That's why they're a little higher. Another note I would make is that we ran a while ago, Darren Nelson, who was the previous Finance Director, said, why don't we collect the water connection charge here because it's inconvenient for our customers to come to City Hall, pay their hundreds of thousands in fees, and they have to go another place to pay their fees. So why don't we collect it here? We were told no by Spuck. Interesting, we ran the numbers today. Since 2016, we have collected for the Met Council and paid them 5.8 million. So clearly, they don't have an issue with it. The same period of time, since 2016, Spuck has collected over 13 million in water connection charges. So that'll put that in perspective for you. Someone asked earlier how much they've collected. So since 2016, so 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, and up to date as the end of September, they've collected over 13 million for water connection charges. So you can see here, we are the fourth. Burnsville, Chan Hassen, Inver Grove Heights are lower than us, Chaska just slightly above us. So Chaska's in, most of these cities, water is integrated within the city or, as I said, they buy it from another city. So we are kind of the outlier here and not the lowest.
Just a comment on here. I know I, I guess I made a political cartoon. Political cartoons are making a comeback. They used to be very prominent back in the 1930s and 40s, but the other day I made a cartoon and they had a quote about me a couple of years ago talking about, we have some very good water rates, commodity rates. And it's true. We do have some low commodity pricing rates. However, that is without any treatment or any treatment built into rates. They collected via development on the water connection charge. But whether the referendum is successful or not, I believe, and I'll say this truthfully, that they even if it did not, was not successful and down the line, the utility had to build a treatment facility and had money for that or had to bond for that, because they probably will, it was recommended that they bond for that, I would think that the commodity price would be adjusted upwards and Spuck would need to do that. So that's down the line, has nothing to do with the city. But we do have very low commodity prices for unfiltered water.
Hey, Mayor and Council, the two probably largest, newest plants on this list are Chan Hassen, completed theirs in Eden Prairie. Eden Prairie also has some level of water softening. So I think the differential in price is made up in the base charge. So it's not the commodity water charge. All of these, except for Shakopee, have a slightly higher base charge. So even if you use no water, you'd be paying a higher base charge.
I think our base rate is 350 or something else.
So the city administrator and council, you've all talked a lot about customer service environment. So the city, over the past several years, has moved to 100% electronic submissions. So all billing, planning, applications are done online, all permit coordinators, they assist our customers. We accept all payments online and then application results and permits are issued online. So through COVID-19, through this whole pandemic, we haven't missed a beat. We, it's amazing the number of people that apply for building permits at midnight or one or two o'clock in the morning because we see them when we come in in the morning, they're in our queue. As of January 2021, thanks to your investment, all applications for every city permit, license, permit, liquor permit, whatever, everything will be online. We're going to be using reviewing software that matches all or most of the architectural engineering firms. We'll now be able to accept checks online. You'll be able to schedule your appointments online. You'll be able to have real-time monitoring of a project's workflow so you'll know exactly where it is in the process. And then you'll also be getting an email or a text notifying of your inspection results. And we'll also have the capability to send you photographs. So if something is messed up, you will get a picture of exactly what it is so you can show it to your contractor. So as you've seen, Spuck does not really have, they kind of tagged on us for review. They're using our license of one of our software. But as you've heard, I mean, I live in a city where I paid my water bill for the past three months with a text today. They sent me a bill, I texted okay, it was paid. Clearly, that's how people expect customer service these days. I think the city has moved that we are very customer-focused and very customer-centric. And I think thanks to the council and management support, you know, in January, we will be at probably the highest level you can be.
And just to give a personal take on this, you know, when I bought a new house in the city, I'd lived here for a year and a half, two years, and then bought a larger house, I was already a customer of Spuck. And so I called up and I said, I'd like to switch my service. And they literally required me to come down to the office and fill it out. And I said, no, no, I'm already, I'm already a customer. And they said, yes, you still need to come in. I had to do that and I had to fill out a form. And so processes for me are my bread and butter. The idea that I had to fill out a form in pen and then hand it to somebody, so they then had to type it in, in and of itself, is a waste of time and a waste of effort. Why not have the customer do that data entry for you? And I was struck by how antiquated their processes were just by doing that very simple thing of having to go down there and, you know, physically be there to make that happen and then fill out in long form a form that essentially had all the information that should have been somewhere in their system already.
Michael?
Mayor and Council, to the city minister's point, when you come into the city right now to do a building permit, you fill it out at a terminal at the front counter. If you don't want to do it online, you actually do it online, but at the front counter because we don't accept paper. Talking about economic developments, Spuck has some programs for solar business incentives. They run out of funding for 2020. Other utilities, other cities, they have key account representatives. So if you're a major utility customer, you get assigned someone who 24/7, something goes wrong, you have their cell phone, you can call them. They have various charging programs for electrical vehicles or they're providing subsidy for electric vehicles. There are some pretty large programs in the metro for commercial solar. So our large industrial users, they've got big roofs, they can handle some big solar projects. Another unique service that other utilities provide is building planning assistance in advance to save energy and water. So you actually will get some incentives, but before you submit plans, you sit down with them and they talk about what programs they have and better ways to insulate and do your billing so you can save money upfront. Couple of utilities have pretty active recruitment programs for companies to come to your community. So they're out marketing nationwide, your community. And then Xcel Energy is a leader in this. They have a certified sites program that minimize clients' risks. So if you have an Xcel certified site, it's guaranteed that all the environmental zoning, everything is done, you just have to come in and get your building permit.
Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
We have another speaker.
Mr. Lilahog.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My topics are going to be about drinking water, infrastructure coordination, and right-of-way management. Like Nate, I've only been here a couple of years. I've been here three years, so I bring in a pretty good, fresh perspective, similar to what a third party would bring in as part of an audience and experience. I've worked 18 years for different cities in the metro, first, a couple of first-tier suburbs and a second-tier suburb. So I have a good perspective. And one perspective that I bring is it was a, you know, a united Public Works Department with water. I think that's a very integral piece to managing those type of utilities and I'll get into that a little bit. But a key observation I wanted to start with is a challenge that surfaces almost basically every day, and that is Spuck and the city are Shakopee. To most customers and entities we work with, we are Shakopee and there's little differentiation. Seems easy, but Spuck and the city are clearly not the same thing in practice. And inherent with unintegrated organizations comes a lot of certain challenges and issues, and that's what I want to speak to here. So the topics that I will be providing testimony on tonight include very notable issues with our structured, paralleled, unintegrated organizations. And then finally, I will challenge us to ask ourselves, should Shakopee address these water quality and systemic issues that I will highlight or should we continue down the same unintegrated path? So here is what we experience. So Mr. Reynolds talked about the comprehensive water plan. So in 2018, all metro cities undertook city comprehensive planning updates. They come and go, they're anywhere from, I think it's about eight years repetitive cycle, something like that. So for most cities, it is a highly integrated and coordinated planning process, period, end of story. For Shakopee, Spuck went at it almost alone with their water portion of the plan. That was pretty unfortunate. Spuck completed that water portion of the plan with little to no city involvement or interaction. Spuck indeed submitted their 2018 comprehensive water plan. It's a 354-page document without any city staff seeing it. We also learned that Spuck completed their 2019 DNR water supply plan with no direct city involvement. That's another 261-page document. So once we got ahold of those documents and reviewed them, we provided comment and additional coordination as well with our West End Auar. That resulted in an 81-page supplement to the comprehensive plan. That typically should not happen. So this lack of partnership, lack of coordination. So this lack of partnership, lack of coordination, lack of inclusiveness caused a substantial and needless extra work for everyone involved, including Met Council staff, DNR staff, consultants, Spuck staff, city staff, and it included obvious extra costs. So this looks very bad in Shakopee, on all involved, to have such a disjointed lack of partnership in an expected, highly coordinated community master plan with transportation, sanitary sewer, land use, parks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This must be changed. Personally, that was a little embarrassing for me, to be honest with you, to be involved with that with that scenario. Next, I want to talk about drinking water. So pretty basic, drinking water is indeed a precious resource and it's arguably one of the most important resources that can affect our health, both acutely and chronically. So as I go into the next slides and information, I ask you to think to yourself and ask these questions as I'm presenting this information. Were you notified and are you aware? So on the next slide, there is a ton of information here. And I'm going to I'm going to try to narrow it down a little bit. So I'm going to give you my professional interpretation of this information. This is not my information. This is information that comes out of Spuck's comprehensive plan, their consumer confidence report, and a memo that, real new memo that went to the Spuck commissioners on October 2nd. So first, I want to talk about water quality and safety, specifically manganese. And I'm going to try not to bore you to death on the eat on the details, but I want to I want to demonstrate how important this is for the community. So first, your body needs manganese to stay healthy, but not not too much because it can be harmful. So the Department of Health came out with a health advisory about five to six years ago. Nothing new as far to as far as health effects on the body, but they actually set a health advisory limit. So health effects that they came out with in this health advisory, it's it it confirms that children and adults who drink water with high levels of manganese for a long time may have problems with memory, attention, and motor skills. Infants may develop learning and behavior problems if they drink water with too much manganese in it. So the Department of Health at that time, they provided new guidance to protect your family by developing guidance values to keep your household drinking water within the with, you know, with with an understanding, is it safe or not? So it should be noted that these are guidance values, and this is where it gets technical that it's tough to understand, but they're not required EPA Environmental Protection Agency standards. So they are not enforced by any anybody, but the Department of Health came out with these values for basically self-responsibility for you to be for you to be responsible with these values. So here's the guidance. If you have an infant who drinks tap water or formula made with tap water, a safe level of manganese in your water is 100 parts per billion or less. If your household is more than one year old, has does not have infants, basically, a safe level of manganese in your water is 300 parts per billion or less. So drinking with a level of manganese above the Department of Health guidance level can be harmful to your health. This is, I'm just repeating Department of Health guidance here and what's in Spuck's plans. That's all I'm doing. So in Spuck's, in the top left, you will see Spuck's 2019 supplement to the water comprehensive plan. Again, that was a supplement that was prompted by our comments. But their supplement included a little better breakdown of manganese. So specifically, and you and I have it highlighted there, well 15 is at 92 parts per billion. Again, for infants, I said it's, the Department of Health said that's 100 parts per billion. Here, well 15 in 2019, according to the comp plan, was 20 was 92 parts per billion. Well 12 was at 80 parts per billion. In the top right, Spuck's 2019 consumer confidence report, that's an annual healthier drinking water. They indicated the highest level of manganese was about was about 45 parts per billion. Same year, different numbers. And then in that memo I just mentioned, October 2nd memo that was just given to Spuck and they talked about it last night, Spuck's 2020 info that was just produced by Spuck's consultant, it indicated that well 15 was at 80 parts per billion and well 12 at 70 parts per billion. So none of these numbers exceeded the level. Correct. Absolutely. It's just below 100 parts, 100 parts per billion. But, and I have it highlighted there, the info also indicates that well 15 saw a spike, this is again their yesterday's memo, saw a spike in manganese levels above the M D H health-based value. It saw a spike above the 100 parts per billion. But then but then the information goes on to qualify that well 15 only makes up 10% of the water supplied to the system, implying that it's not an issue, right? But 10% of Shakopee water, just below 100 parts per billion or or was it above, however you interpret this data, it's not my data, but it's right there. It's right at that concerning level according to this, according to this health risk assessment.
Is that the well on the west end in the Horton project?
Well 15 is actually, no, it is centered in the the southern end on, I think it's the High Bluff area. Okay? So it so to that point, it's buried in a residential residential area, not commercial, right? So 10% of Shakopee water, just right at, you split hairs, 80 parts per billion, 92, spiking over 100, it's at 100, right? 10% water supply, 10% of 43,000 population consumers, you know, I'm roughly estimate, that's 4,300 people, guessing a few of them were infants. So there you have it, right? The drinking water division at the Department of Health generally indicates that if the water meets the EPA standards, and this was in some, in the paper recently, you know, quoting Spuck and quoting Department of Health officials, that it's considered high-quality water. Understood. You're meeting the EPA standards, but on the side, Department of Health has these guidance levels that aren't enforceable. So the Department of Health Environmental Health Section, they say it a little bit differently. They say you should be concerned. So I'm here to tell you folks that a chunk of your water is right at that health risk level according to the Minnesota Department of Health Advisory. Not, this isn't me talking, this is me, me just reiterating their information. So this is an issue, this is a concern. I welcome people to talk to me about this. Well, as I indicated, well 15 is basically buried in the middle of a residential area. I'm 50 years old this year and I have a granddaughter, and I can tell you that if that if I lived in that area, and my son, he just moved to Woodbury, and everyone knows some of those issues in Woodbury water with 3M out there. He put a $6,000 filter system in his house because he has two infants in his house. I would take heed of the Minnesota Department of Health Advisory in this area. Are you, so again, I ask you, are you concerned? Were you notified of this health risk? Are you aware? Switching gears, we're going to talk about nitrates. So that was a lot for one slide, so I appreciate everyone's patience. There's a lot of info here. So again, per EPA standards, nitrate nitrates in drinking water at levels of 10 parts per million is a health risk for infants. So high nitrate levels in drinking water can cause blue baby syndrome. The sources of nitrate, basically, for the most part, you generally see it from fertilizer use, but we also see it from leap leaking, septic tanks, sewage, erosion of natural deposits, et cetera. So from Spuck's data that I have shown here, it appears that Spuck has has done a pretty good job of monitoring and blending the water to meet the minimum requirements. Again, the minimum requirements, great, healthy water because of that, right? Well, there's some, there's some side discussion we need to have about it. So again, Department of Health says Shakopee meets the minimum contaminant levels, therefore it's high, high-quality drinking water. But we just had that discussion, that simply being under the M C L doesn't necessarily mean that we're good to go. So I'm going to show you some things here. So let's take a closer look at the data. The data shows that we are just under the maximum contaminant level of 10 parts per million. The data's all right there, they have trending charts over the years. I would say most communities in Minnesota are substantially under the 10 parts per million. Shakopee is concerningly close. Again, Spuck has done a good job of testing and tracking this. Overall, across the board, trends are pretty flat. Most are decreasing in nitrates, but some are actually increasing. Again, pretty flatly, and it's hard to see these trends on some, but some are actually increasing. So this is concerning. Is there an issue with nitrates in Shakopee? Should Shakopee be doing more? Should Shakopee be 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 more proactive? Well, let's talk some more about nitrates. Next slide. The Minnesota Department of Health prepares an annual nitrate report. Surprisingly to to some, there's actually 966 community public water systems in Minnesota. So that's quite a few, it's almost 1,000. So so why did Minnesota, why did the Department of Health create this report? Because the Department of Health identified an issue in some public water systems in Minnesota. So they keep close tabs on this with an annual report pertaining to nitrates. Guess what? Even though Shakopee meets the EPA standards, Shakopee made the list in this report. Why? You tell yourself that, because there's a concern. You don't do this unless there's a concern, right? So let's put it into perspective. The top right, there's a map there. There's 74 dots on that map, almost again, out of a 1,000 community public water systems in Minnesota. Shakopee is one of those dots. In fact, Shakopee is one of three in Scott County, one of only three in Scott County. We are in the category with Mobile Manor, just right on the west side of Shakopee, they have their own public water drinking system. And then there's also, the other dot is a Brookhaven Development further south in Scott County. So Shakopee is the largest city on this list, twice the size of any other city, most of which are rural community public water systems. So recently Shakopee made an awesome list, the number 30 in the nation of, you know, cities, that is, everyone in this community should be proud of that. But behind the scenes, a little quieter, Shakopee made this list, which only 8% of Minnesota cities are. And Shakopee unfortunately is a standout with the size of this community. We're the only big community in there, a community of 40,000. The next closest one is a 20,000, like a Northfield or or something like that, right? So note that since 1994, the highest record of nitrates in Shakopee was 12 parts per million, again, which exceeded that 10 parts per million. So we're just, we're just below. The next slide, a little more on nitrates and groundwater protection. This map is out of Spuck's wellhead protection plan. It shows the soil infiltration map, soil infiltration. So what this map shows, the red and yellow areas basically show, I should say, the red and orange areas, shows very fast and fast categories of infiltration, meaning when the when it rains on the surface, that water gets into the groundwater very fast. Per these charts, very fast, the red up here, which is hours to weeks, and fast, which is weeks to a month. So that means we have a pretty high, highly vulnerable area in Shakopee. So you look at that map and the red and the orange almost includes the entirety of Shakopee. So we have a pretty highly vulnerable area in Shakopee. It's pretty, you know, the surface is pretty connected to the groundwater, and why is that? Because we have pretty shallow bedrock. So literally, if something is spilled or exists on the surface, it can end up into the drinking water supply in an extremely short timeframe. So this is a notable condition when it comes to a proactive wellhead protection plan. And with the next slide, a little more on wellhead protection, another map, you can see the same shading of colors, the, so this map shows the drinking water supply management area to the, relative to the surface water vulnerability runoff areas. So the salmon reddish color, that represents that high vulnerability, high vulnerability area, similar to that previous map. So let's talk about wells in this area. Well 5, that is in the top right, it's out in the industrial area, northeast part of town. It's one of the, one of the wells with higher nitrate. Nitrate concentrations, a history being close to or exceeding 10 parts per million, real that real close. Interesting part about this well, it's in the northeast part of town, it's pretty close to the Met Council Environmental Center Treatment Plant.
Blue Lake.
Yep. The Blue Lake Treatment Plant, right? But what recently occurred in this area near well 5, and and these are the hard things that I have talking about because they're not fun things to talk about, but due to the Spuck's high water connection fee and other fees to mitigate that difficult discussion with a developer, with a new property owner, rather than pay those water connection fees, Spuck encouraged, and this was a portable restroom company, to drill a private well in this high vulnerability area. So you have a portable restroom company, they drilled their own well. This, this is in Spuck's service area. Spuck has water plumbed to that property. This should not have occurred, in my opinion. What did the city do on our end when we found out about this well? The city immediately instituted with the city council's approval and adopted an ordinance that would prohibit future wells of this nature to add a safeguard to help prevent, to help prohibit this in the future. It should not have happened. It should not have been allowed to drilled under any type of responsible wellhead protection or public water system, especially since there's a water line available to this property. Shakopee must do better in protecting its groundwater and improve to a much higher level and proactive, with proactive initiatives. So I'm not done with nitrates. Here's a, here's a next slide. So one more slide on nitrates. So another state entity, the Department of Agricultural Agriculture, Minnesota Department of Agriculture is trying to help too. So an excellent statewide proactive initiative that just got implemented last month, the Department of Agriculture, they implemented a fertilizer restriction in certain areas throughout the state to help address nitrates and groundwater. Again, flip back a few, see the slides, you don't need to, but because they know there's Minnesota Department of Health, the state knows there's an issue with certain communities and collectively, everyone's trying to take care of it. Well, if there wasn't an issue or concern, the state wouldn't be doing this. It is a concern, and extremely proactive measures, and kudos for the state to do this. So if you know me, there's always a but. So the but in this case, the restriction applies to agricultural land. So we have agricultural land in in Shakopee, but on this map where where the majority of these restrictions would apply, and the Department of Agriculture is working with property owners, i.e. farmers, the purple and the green, that's residential, that's developed area, that's not farmland. So unfortunately, it's non-egg land, so this new initiative by the state is going to do little to address some of the issues we're experiencing in those vulnerable areas in our developed part of town. So what does that mean to Shakopee, for Shakopee? There's an issue and Shakopee needs to needs to do more. We need to get proactive with better identifying the source of nitrates and correcting the nitrates issue at the source, at the surface, at septic systems, wherever else they're coming from. We need to, we need to dig into this. The state, we can't rely on the state to do everything. So that is my nitrate overview, but again, I ask you, is there an issue with nitrates in Shakopee? Ask these questions yourself. I, I'm just giving you data and things that are going on in our community. Should Shakopee be doing more? Should Shakopee be more proactive? So the next slide, a couple of other items with our water quality. When you look at your groundwater and and drinking water, it's good to get a total picture. It's not about manganese only, it's not only about nitrates, it's about other things too, right? The total picture. There's probably, most of the communities in the metro have a filter system. There's probably not one single sole reason why the majority of communities built those filtration plants. It was collectively kind of all the issues of better hire, safeguard, et cetera, including aesthetics. aesthetics. So a couple of other issues in Shakopee. So sodium. Sodium does not have a maximum contaminant level amount, but the EPA, in this case, gives guidance of 20 parts per million, and that's a health advisory, 20 parts per million. So this, this info is, this info that I have in the top right, this is right out of Spuck's Consumer Confidence Report. Again, this is a 2019 report. So Shakopee ranges a sodium between 13.2 and 65.6. That's a, folks, that's above 20 parts per million. Hardness. Shakopee's water is hard, kind of end of story, right? Water above 100 milligrams per liter of hardness is hard. Shakopee's wells, they range between 163 and 446. So that's not too unique to Minnesota at all. But again, that helps tell a complete story of the water in Shakopee. So I end the water quality part of my testimony with, I've heard people on social media, et cetera, say that I'm using scare tactics by talking about this drinking water info. Well, I have my big boy pants on today, and I can take the heat, right? So in fact, I feel it would be irresponsible for me as a Shakopee city engineer, as a Shakopee city engineer, not to have these discussions and be frank, and inclusive discussions with the city council and community on the, on this collective picture of the drinking water. It's not always clear and cut and dry about where these standards fall, but I'm telling you, in my opinion, we need to address some of them. And upfront, I asked you to think, think to yourself and ask questions as we went through this. Were you notified and are you aware? And again, I ask you to ask yourselves those questions. So my final question, was Shakopee involved in the important decision-making to ensure inclusive drinking and water safety, and an equitable system is in place for all of Shakopee? Ask, ask yourselves those questions. Don't ask me those questions. So the next part, again, some other not-so-fun stuff to talk about, but I'm going to change gears a little bit and talk about some systemic issues and challenges that we have with the infrastructure, natural resources coordination, and management of the right-of-way. Again, I've been here three years, kind of an audit-type of perspective, but I also have listened to past people in my position, and we have some long, you know, we have a lot of good staff here, have been a while, so they can, they've also given me their perspective. So first is, well, is there an issue with wellhead protection? Wellhead protection goes hand-in-hand with surface water, and the best practices that you have with surface water, as well as with the best practices with groundwater. So what I'm saying is, surface water and groundwater, they go together. Spuck doesn't manage surface water, the city does. So we, we can't have these parallel systems that aren't integrated. They, they don't work very good together. You gotta have these integrated, and you have to be in sync. And I'm going to talk about some issues that I've seen here of an, of a unintegrated system. So cross-connection, that's a huge no-no. You do not connect a private well into the city's drinking water system. You don't do it. It's against ordinance, it's against your wellhead protection plan. But I'm going to give you an example of, of what happens when you have this unintegrated system. Couple of years ago, we had a very notable city industry that had a, that was, that we were working through with a sewer and water billing issue. They had a leak, a big leak, like two, two water tower full leak. That quantity of water leak, that's a lot, right? You know, 1.5 million, I can't remember off the top of my head, but a lot of water, 1.5 million gallons, somewhere in there. So with that, we needed to, so, so a lot of the older parts of town, you don't have a water meter, and then you don't have a sewer meter. So did that water go down the sewer? So we're looking at a $17,000 sewer credit, because that water, that water that leaked, it didn't go down in the sewer. We were able to verify that through, we're still working on it, to be honest with you, to get a better system of, of that old part of town. But, but during our evaluation, I'm walking with six other public works staff, our key staff, and none of us knew what was going on there because of the oldness of the system. And I simply asked, we're talking about them with their system, and they said, yep, our well's connected right here. I said, okay, your well, and the drinking water's connected right here. And I said, this is, this is a new building, folks, in this town. It's, it's not, you know, it's not a 50-year-old building. This was built probably, I don't know the date, it burnt down, so maybe some of you know, within the last 10 years, right? So this cross-connection should have never happened. Why, why do things like this happen? Because it's unintegrated. Because the, just the system part of it is why stuff like that happens. So we, Shakopee must ensure more systematic, proactive approach in this regard. So another item would be, I talked about new private wells were, were allowed, so I don't want to rehash all that, but it comes right into the wellhead protection plan. City implemented that new ordinance. Now Spuck can work alongside the city and make sure that doesn't happen again. But we need to become more proactive in the wellhead protection plan, and seal and uphold wells, and absolutely not allowing new private wells in certain situations in these highly vulnerable areas. Another item would be the lack of surface water wellhead protection initiatives and practices with new development. So as I indicated, I've been here three years, and we generally have a monthly development coordination meeting with city staff, county staff, and Spuck staff, and the developers. So in these three years, I've seen little to no input on Spuck's end with the wellhead protection initiatives during developments. So really, no comments on the water and the interaction with the drinking water protection area, really whatsoever. The only protection comments are coming from city staff, based on my past experience and our other staff experience with surface water, and knowing that we have to do a good job, especially in these highly vulnerable areas. So Shakopee must become more proactive and involved with this wellhead protection plan and integrate this. We cannot have a wellhead protection plan that's passive. It has to be very proactive. Construction coordination issues. I'm talking about some of these things that typically, we're not talking about at this level, but I feel it's important to, to show just across the board why, why we have to integrate this. So construction inspection challenges. A couple of examples I want to bring, where it's a disservice that I have experienced time and time again on some of these projects, due to some of our inspection practices that we have set up. So how the city has it is, when we have a project, developer project, new infrastructure, Spuck inspects the water, and the city inspects everything else, sanitary, storms, streets, et cetera. But Spuck charges developers to actually inspect the water. So, so on our end, therefore, city doesn't inspect water. So Spuck should be, or not, you know, how is that supposed to work on a project? It's not, it's not good. Again, I started out by saying, these deep utilities need to be inspected and, and integrated together. So it's, it's not black and white like that. So some of the issues that we've encountered, when I first got here, we had a development that was done, it was supposed to be done, but when Spuck came back to accept it, they keyed their valves, and their, their valves are way up in the air. Well, what does that mean? The water main got too shallow. It's the wrong time to be discovering and inspecting and telling a contractor and a developer that your water main, for a good couple hundred feet, is too shallow. The roadway was ready to pave the final wear course and be done. So, and this was a battle, so the city has to work with the developer, because we're ultimately responsible on those developments, and say, Spuck has taken a hard line, you have to lower that water line. That is, that's, that's not fun discussions for me, because it should have been caught at multiple levels before we got to that point of the project. Why am I bringing this dirty laundry out here? Again, we have to talk, very frankly, about these issues with an unconnected, you know, a parallel type of system, because it's inherent in it. So, so they went back and they ripped up that water main and lowered it about a foot and a half. It's what you don't want to have to tell a contractor. It shouldn't have, it shouldn't have happened. So, let's see, another component, I'm going to take a second here. That's just simply a disservice to everyone involved in that regard. A couple of other items we've had, sometimes we have issues with water services and corporation, the water shut-off valves, they don't get constructed right, and they leak, not immediately, but a couple of years later, right? Well, the warranty lasts for a year or two. Now, two years later, we just, we just, I'm saying we, the city, Spuck, Shakopee, right? We just replaced the water service, and now it's leaking two years later but out of warranty. Well, what does a homeowner expect? City, you just replaced my private water service, it's leaking, I expect you to replace that. It's brand new, it's only two years old. Well, this was a fight with Spuck and our staff, to get Spuck to stand up and help these residents out after, after the warranty period. Eventually, it, they did it, but it was a fight. That's important to have that integrated discussions when it comes with the city managing these projects on every level. One other part would be, again, with this, Spuck is water and city is everything else. Our Veering project on the west side of town, we came in the first phase and installed the water in the sanitary, right? So our inspector is out there inspecting the sanitary, and Spuck's inspector is inspecting the water main. So what comes in next, in the second phase, was our storm sewer and our roadway. So we had very clear vertical offsets of where that storm sewer was going to come in the next year. So they would have vertical bends to lower that water main, so when we came in next year with that storm sewer, that we would not be in direct conflict with the water main that was just installed, you know, six months earlier. Well, because of that unintegrated system, that water main did not get built for multiple different reasons with that vertical offset. So those issues just snowballed. So Spuck took a hard line on it. Well, the contractor should have caught that, it was their fault. Well, Spuck, city, who's supposed to be, who should have caught it? A lot of different parties. But Spuck was, Spuck did not want to pay the contractor to redo that. But I took the hard line on the city that we have to be fair to the contractor. We should have caught that as well. So there's a partnership with our contractors and with the city in situations like that, and we have to be frank and admit those issues and work alongside them. So again, dirty laundry here, but you have to talk about those things on how it, some of the challenges that we have with an unintegrated system. So construction materials and practices, there's been a couple of times when we should have used, we again, that, that in my opinion, we should have used a better material with construction, like in some difficult places where there's, where there's, we could have done directional drilling with some plastic pipe, but Spuck does not use plastic pipe. But it's standard use in other communities, it's very cost, and there's, there's a lot of cost and constructability implications using steel pipe everywhere. So some other issues that we've experienced would be... Yep, I already talked about this one, would be that the city taking the lead on these So the water and sanitary and storm are so integrated due to the depth and function that they, they just must be managed in a very direct and coordinated method, and that's not always easy. So that's, it's not happening all the time, and time and time again, it's a substantial disservice for all involved when we have issues. So we have holes and gaps that are difficult to fix with this unintegrated system. And the next slide, I want to talk about a couple other type of issues, would be developer issues, and then consumer and community issues. So first, the developer fees, as far as Spuck's go, with their water fees are not aligned with the city's. So generally, hard to explain, but we give, when you develop a land, we deduct for the storm ponds and don't penalize the property owner for the area of storm ponds, which makes up some significant areas. So these, these billings aren't aligned, or the, the fees aren't aligned. Spuck actually charges for the storm pond, and the city doesn't. Well, that's a significant amount of extra money that developers have to pay, because they, it's not deducted for developable acreage. So the city gets some pretty hard pushback from time, time and time, so they're not even city issues, they're Spuck issues. So there's some developers that are a little, little more savvy, i.e., so how do you get around this? If you haven't, so there's some developers that know ways of getting around this, so they work with the city, and they create unique ways to get around this. Like, there's a church out south, that, a way to get around, you know, the gouging that goes on with these unaligned fee structures is, you just call it an outlot, and subdivide it and create an outlot. Well, that's a lot of extra work, and we don't need to be doing that. The only reason we're creating an outlot is to avoid a Spuck fee. That's not how this should be happening. We got to work better and align these, align these development fees. The city's talked a long time, and asked Spuck to change their fees. Sounds like they might be doing it now. I think we, I think we have asked them enough times finally, with different leadership over there, that we might be making some headway there. Another systemic type of issue would be development-construction coordination from the start of a project, and plan approval, and things change, and so you have Spuck-approved plans, and city staff and engineering-approved plans, and the building official-approved plans. And on the Doran project, when you have a lot of moving parts, you get some assumptions that we can do X, Y, and Z, and they build it, and when they go get a meter from Spuck and install the meter, and Spuck says, yeah, you can't do it this way, and then, well, it's $150,000 change order to change it, some feathers are ruffled. And that would not happen if you had an integrated system. We have to do better than that in this city. It's, it's a disservice to contractors and developers and to our residents. Another example would be joint trench. When I first got here, the city had a joint trench policy, meaning private utilities, power, gas, communications, they go in a joint trench to better manage the public right-of-way. Spuck does not like doing that, they still don't like doing that, and they wouldn't do it. It took literally about a year for us to enforce a city ordinance on Spuck to make them go joint trench. I don't even know how that works in my head, but that's, that's what it took. And it was, it was, I don't like to say fight in these type of, you know, settings, but it was a major fight with Spuck to implement something that every other utility was actually appreciative of, and, and the developers were as well, because then they know it's a coordinated utility trench, and they get it all built at once. We finally got Spuck on board with that, but it shouldn't have been as painful, and as big of a fight as it, as it was. All right. So consumer and community issues, issues with streamlined customer service. Many, many don't know to, are they supposed to contact city or Spuck? Again, they just contact Shakopee, and we get a lot of those, we get a lot of those calls, and then what do we do with them? We pass them on. Sometimes they don't get passed on, and we spin our wheels a lot. One example would be the light pole down, I thought was on a city street, a private development wanted to put a surveillance sign on this, on one of the light poles to say, hey, we're watching you, right? That was a long time ago. Spuck sent him my way and said, hey, city, are you okay with putting these, putting this on, on your light poles? The city actually owns the light poles. Spuck builds them for us, for the most part. I got a call from that neighborhood group today, and after about 15 minutes of talking to them, I finally picked up on the fact that he's in the wilds across from the casino, and I said, okay, Spuck system, but not a city light, talk to Prior Lake or Spuck or whoever owns that light pole. So it's just, it's a huge time sink. So it's just, it's a huge time sink because we do not have this, this integration. It's a disservice to, to our staff to have to spend that extra time when we shouldn't have. I should have been more astute and figured that out earlier, I guess. Um, but it's also to that Prior Lake resident that, that's been working with Spuck and now the city for a couple of months and working with the wrong people, right? So confusing and cumbersome authority in some instances for the community. Uh, boy, you know, and another example would be fence building in, uh, in an easement. Something really simple, but a simple fence snowballed into, uh, I, I know the city council's aware of it, but way more than any resident should have to go through. And frankly, it was a time sink on city staff time and Spuck time. And we could have easily taken care of it if we were integrated together.
But that, that fence issue was, you know, we, they, we wanted Spuck to sign off on that because the fence was over their infrastructure. And then if we had that waiver, then we could grant that easement. Um, but the fence was already installed without a permit. And then, you know, everybody told him to go talk to Spuck and then, uh, Spuck said no a couple of times. And then finally they, they said yes, and then came to us and then we approved that after the fact. So.
So I thank you for allowing me to, to take that time, um, and talk about some of this gray area that typically, uh, I'm, I'm never bringing to this level and we shouldn't have to. But there's a lot of disjointed gray area, um, with the wellhead protection plan, surface water versus groundwater, easements, land ownership, construction projects, who do customers call, et cetera. Um, this joint disjointedness in these systemic coordination issues are substantial. And again, they're a disservice to Shakopee, whoever you are in Shakopee at whatever angle. It's a substantial disservice. Um, we can do much better and, and frankly, we must. Um, I also want, want you to know that, um, I did not take all this time to, with the goal of, you know, Shakopee obtaining heavenly water here. Um, that's not my goal. My professional mindset and, uh, my professional goals. Are to better address to the higher level of safety with the potential health concerns that I, that are documented and known with the Minnesota Department of Health and in Spuck's own, own documents. That's where my mindset is. And I, I just feel that professionally that we, we must do better. Uh, especially Mr. Reynolds indicated customer service. Everything I just talked about, again, I, I don't like talking about because it's the poorest of poor customer service. And, uh, I know how to fix it. So finally. I first ask you, do you agree that we haven't, that we have, what we, what I outlined are issues and concerns? Um, boy, I, I would expect you do. So if the answer is yes, how can we address the issues? And, uh, I know how to address the issues. It, you know, it'd be merging, uh, that, that integral water system with, uh, the city public works utilities and everything else that the city does with streets and water and storm sewer and all the above. So we have a unified approach. The current, the current system, um, it just has too many holes. There is a. Probably more of a business. I, I, I have, I work for the city, but I absolutely have a business sense. Um, so maybe more of a profession preference or suggestion in my, my opinion. But I feel the city should be run like a business and this is, um, definitely a business where it should be streamlined and integrated. I've, I've ran both and, uh, uh, without integration, it will become difficult to fully and substantially address the notable issues that I've raised. With integration and merging, we could fix every single one of these issues that I spoke of. So with that, um. Again, I've talked about, I typically don't want to handle situations this way, but, uh, as indicated, most metro cities operate under an integrated utility system and by nature avoids these issues. Uh, the health and safety part of my info that I provided, I'm simply providing the info that you all should hear and know. So Shakopee can make a well-informed decision for the community and nothing more and nothing less. So with that, um, I thank you and respectfully, I would stand for any questions.
Thanks, Steve, for your. For your review and I do appreciate it. Um, you know, I stand for one city, one team, effective and efficient. Uh, the integration, I've heard a lot about these issues. Of course, as someone that served on that board for over 10 years. And when I hear their water reports, they say things are fine. We're blending wells to knock down the nitrates to keep it, keep it low. Um, when I hear this concern now over the last year or so. Um. I didn't, I didn't hear that over on Saracen Street. Um, they should be planning for the future. Um, and looking at water quality. Um, some say the water is great and as the health official said, high quality, but are we planning for the future? Um, I know they said they won some water tasting awards back in 2013. Well, MPR did a test, uh, just last spring and I think the word was yuck. Um, I think our community deserves better in protection. A lot of these development issues, every one of those, I took many calls from developers over those issues to get them solved. And I, I do appreciate that, that look of. That we could, we should be looking at doing something about water quality, uh, especially, uh, Spuck's been around for 70 years. What about the next 70 years? Um, I think that's important, um, from that. And, and the issues that you bring about a non-integrated system has actually caused a lot of issues over the 20, 25 years. So I appreciate that. Do, uh, other counselors have comments at least to Steve's portion?
Um, I, I, I feel that it was really, um, um. In-depth and enlightening information, I guess. Um, you know, as mayor said, you, you don't hear about these things when you're at a Spuck, at a Spuck meeting. Um, and, and I know that when I was sitting at the planning commission, you would read through the different reports at the planning commission and it was usually a Spuck report that says just, just follow what we say to follow and, and never got into real depth. Um, um, and, and then, you know, of course, when you see it, um, at the city council level also. So, um, I really appreciate all the work that you put into this and definitely. Like, it was very eye-opening. So thank you.
Counselor Contras.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, to Mr. Lily Hogg, thank you so much again for all this. Like, like Counselor, um, Brennan says, it is eye-opening. And I'm sad to see that people are thinking that these are scare tactics. Unfortunately to me, I mean, fortunately to me, they're not, but you know, I, I'm sorry to say, the truth is, is what we're being shown and, and the, the evidence is here. What gets me and it bothers me is our young residents and our older, um, residents. Not everybody can buy a water softener or a, a filter, you know, uh, for a huge amount or whatever amount. Not everybody can. And I'm just. Oh, looking at this, it, it, it bothers me. The levels that, you know, yeah, they might say, well, they're right under. We're fine. No, they're not. I mean, for such a long period of time, drinking it and looking at it. I'm just trying to, you know, just not trying to go in any way. We're just educating again, you know, that, that's the whole thing. We're educating, but it bothers me because who are we leaving behind? Our, our older, you know, our, our older residents and our kids. And they should, you know, our older residents live their life, you know, their, their, their days that they have left at a high-quality life, you know? And drinking the water that we drink is, you know, one of the, like you said, it's one of our precious, um, minerals that we have, precious, you know, water that we have. And our children, they don't tell us, you know, they, they don't have like a voice. Yeah, they'll say, mom, that water is gross or whatever, but sometimes they don't have a way to, to make that water better, right? I mean, if we, as a parent, we can't afford a, a water filter system or something. So that honestly, that bothers me. And I, I really hope that the people who think that these are scare tactic, think about if they have grandchildren or kids, think about them. No, not, nothing else. Think about your health. It, it's all, we're just showing you what's going on. That's it. Thank you. And thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you. Counselor Whiting.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, Mr. Little Hogg, I appreciate all your, your, um, work on this. You can, you clearly see there's a passion there and a knowledge base that, uh, once tapped, if, if the voters allow it, uh, would really help out the system. The water quality issues that you brought up, uh, they're on the edge. I mean, some might wander over it. It's, uh, it's concerning, uh, because you're not monitoring that water all of the time. So you really don't know where it's spiking and when. Um, and you talked about a coordinated, integrated system and, and a quality of service that, uh, we just don't see. And, and I think this ratepayers and the citizens of Shakopee deserve. The big issue that you talked about, another, other than the water quality, was that wellhead protection program. And that, uh, very serious area, uh, concerning area. And the fact that they would allow, uh, you know, a porta potty company to drill a well. Right where wa- well, water service is there, uh, just to avoid the fees. That should tell people something. And as an elected official, I think it's our duty to bring these issues to the, the citizens and the voters to, to look at because this is concerning. You bring up detail after detail. And, and, uh, the citizens don't see a lot of this. That's, that's the other part. We've had, uh, several developers, uh, I think it was Mr. Bannerman from the Copper Pint Group. He talked about, uh, uh, the Horton project, uh, you know, Mr. Sewell's had issues with, with the utility. And then you brought up the Doran and the meter issue that, that the public don't see those, uh, that kind of dysfunction in management. And, uh, um, that kind of thing needs to get out there and, and the voters need to hear about that. So thank you for the, the effort you put in.
You know, there's a, from the public utility side, there's a lot of defend and protect. That's what I hear and see over social media, defend, defend, defend. And I know when we had our joint meeting here, I think over a year ago, we were talking about the fees, right? And the fees being high and getting the developers on us or on the copper pint time. Well, now it's well over a year later and I have a copy of one of the packet information agenda items from yesterday's, uh, Shakopee Utility Meeting. And they had Eilers, a respected, uh, financial group, talking about some of the things we've been talking about for well over a year. Uh, reduce the apartment living water connection charge, uh, down to point eight zero. Um, lower the water connection charge, um, by 5.5%. And then actually something that we talked about, that Steve just talked about is align Shakopee Public Utilities definition of a net area with that of the cities for purpose of calculating the trunk water charge. Um, so a couple of, I think are wins. Of course, one of them is a trunk water char. Lower one rate, the water connection charge. But then another one was to raise the, the trunk water charge, but they're reducing the, taking out the ponding. So, um, you know, we've been pounding on the table here for 18 months on these items. And, and I don't think they took action on it. They want to discuss it and maybe Counselor Brennan will bring it up, but thank you. All right. Do we have a?
Well, I, I just wanted, I, I wanted to close, you know, obviously there, there are pluses and minuses to each vote. And, and there are some legitimate arguments for not moving forward with the referendum. Uh, these include separation from the political body of the council. And if there was an unstable political body, which frankly, this community has never had. If there was an unstable political body, you know, I could see possibly that falling into the picture. Uh, the other is control over the utility decisions may be being made by an independent body. And, and finally, the biggest one I could figure out is just the continuity of operations or what I call the afraid of change. The afraid of change. And, you know, we can sit here and talk about what we would do all day as we, if we were to move forward with this. But I think it's important for each resident to look at our organizations and what you know about us at this point. The city of Shakopee is renowned for being one of the lowest taxed municipalities in the metro area. We have continued to reduce our tax rate. We continue to work from a fiscally conservative perspective. For me, it is a moral issue when it comes to taxes and fees. We, we, we have a moral responsibility to only take what we need because it is not a voluntary transaction. It is us taking someone's money. And then I would ask you to look at the leadership of Shakopee Public Utilities. I would ask you to look at the fees that Shakopee, Shakopee Public Utilities charges. And frankly, and finally. Look at the facts versus the fantasy. You know, you, you, you look at social media. And it's amazing to me that people can say some of the things that, oh, the city's looking to do with a straight face. Look at the facts, you know, and then make your determination on the facts. But don't, but don't have this be some kind of a, 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 you know, large plot where the city is looking to take over something. I'll be very upfront. This is a lot of work. Doing this has been a lot of work. Having the utility integrated in the city would be a lot of work for all of my staff and myself. The problem is we now know. It was easy. When we said it's a Spuck issue, you need to talk to Spuck. But unfortunately now we know. And that moral responsibility kicks in yet again. We have the responsibility to do everything we can do, the moral responsibility to fix things. Yes, it would be a tremendous lot of work for staff. And, and, and if the referendum doesn't move forward, we don't have to worry about that hard work. But it is a moral question at this point based upon what we know. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. That's all that staff has on this issue. We're always willing and able to, to, uh, take questions. Uh, I, I encourage members of the public, if you have a question.
Right.
Reach out. Uh, we'll tell you one way or the other. If, if it's, if it's, if it's a, a pro resolution or, or not a pro resolution, it don't make any difference.
Right.
Uh, the whole point is, is that we have a responsibility to tell the truth. We have the responsibility to put the information out there. And, and, and unlike the fantasy land where we're just going to say things, everything we talk about is going to have documentation. Everything you have heard from tonight has documents attached to it, top to bottom. This is not the city staff in any way. Making things up. It's all documented. We all have the records. We spent one heck of a lot of time getting to know. So that's all I have, sir.
Well, I think it, you know, it, we began this almost 18 months ago, talking about fees. And now there might be some movement on it. I think that what happened in regard to the accountability for the salary and every, you know, at the beginning, there was so much defending and protecting. Who, who, who are they defending? Are they defending the ratepayer? Are they protecting the ratepayer? Are they defending and protecting the organization? The state law was broken for several years. And as I said the last time, someone needs to apologize. Who is going to take responsibility? I know when I served on that commission, I've been accused of a lot of stuff on social media. Whenever we talked about salary. Every meeting I was in, I said that the manager of the Shakopee Public Utilities should never be paid more than the city administrator. Because the utility is a, is a stepchild of the city. The city owns it. It's just an arm-length transaction with its own, uh, political appointee board. But whether it's the pilot, fees, we've never talked about rates as far as the commodity prices. We talked about developer fees and that's fine. Water quality, everything was fine over on Saracen Street. Water quality, everything was fine over on Saracen Street. Maybe we've gotten some new information or more. Do we deserve better? I think that to break a law, we had a, someone broke a law five, six years ago over on 17th Avenue. My gosh, the outrage in our community was, never ended. They still talk about it. We have now a report from an investigation. I hope people read that. I asked them the last time. They're still talking about the report, New Vest Report on 17th Avenue. We talk about the value of a precious commodity, water, and the quality. It's come to my attention, we have a water main break. Course can't afford to fix that, so let it leak. We don't have money, we'll do it next year. Doesn't that say something about how much you value water? Just let it spill. I think we talk about accountability. And then, you know, they can raise rates all on their own without any oversight and without any accountability because they're not elected. Sounds like what we talk about, the governance of the Met Council. I, this is not political. This is not about power. This is not about money. This is about making our community better. This is about one team, one city, one team. Being effective, efficient, and integrated, one-stop shopping, planning for the future. I think our community deserves better. And I think we'll get there. It's just how you want to do it. I know the residents are all worried about their rates, the commodity rates. We have some pretty low rates. But I think water quality goes on top of that. And that hasn't been addressed. And whether it's from the utility or the city, water quality will be a topic moving forward. I'm tired of getting the calls from the developers. D.R. Horton, $14 million for their development out on the West End. And we talk about the amount of infrastructure that has to go into that area that will serve a whole bunch of land. As a matter of fact, we're talking about annexation of 500 acres. What about when that gets developed and those fees? We even had a small business relocate from Shakopee or from Burnsville to here, a real point of pride for that business owner. And he got charged $36,000 by the utility, paid it, and then had to scramble to get the money back. And actually, Michael Kurski played a role in documenting of getting that money back for that company. Dorn Splash Pad, a riverfront development. I think it's 2020. Water quality, and actually, we talk about the power side too. AMI, automated readers, meters that get read so consumers can start making better choices about electricity and actually saving some money. I think this is an important issue. There's a lot of, I can't believe what would happen if we didn't have social media, how people would consume and get their news or their information. But I guess that's what I have to say. And please be informed. Not everything on social media is true. Thank you. Anybody else want to add on to this?
I just want to say, one of the comments I've heard is the, that we're power grabbing. And I don't think there is a member of this council who would stand there and say that they are power grabbers. I think it's all good, good worthy people who are working hard for the community. And I personally am not a person who likes to be out in the limelight, who would rather be at home by myself. And power grabbing is really not a top priority in my life. And I could say that each of the five people here could say the same thing about themselves and about each other.
Counselor Whiting, any last comment on this before we move on?
No, thank you for the opportunity. I think we've hit a lot of things. It's just, you know, the things you're hearing out on social media are stretched out, not correct. A lot of people don't understand the facts. A lot of people, unfortunately, we don't have a lot of people watching our meetings and seeing the things that we go through with SPUC. So thank you for all the work that staff has put into this. And I hope that this reaches out through the news networks and the social media and people get a chance to really absorb the facts. And of course, I want to mention the website that the city has put out. A lot of good facts on there. Maybe we can quote that again. Thank you.
Counselor Lehman, you have a lot to say on social media. Do you have anything to say now?
Mayor, I, you know, I don't want this to look like a lobbying effort for a yes vote, which it appears to be, which is illegal. So therefore, I will just take the information and then I will pursue getting the information from the other side because there's two sides to every story. And I think we need to be cautious because this really kind of implies that the city is lobbying publicly at a council meeting for a yes vote, and that's illegal. Thank you.
Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Just to, you know, finish off with, I mean, not finish off, but add on to Counselor Lehman's. I apologize. I'm learning a lot of information. And because I do live in Shakopee and I do have children and I do have older friends and family. So I'm learning and in no way am I trying to go either way, whatever. It's just take it as a learning seminar session that we're having right now and do, you know, educate yourself and do, you know, and choose what you feel is correct. That's it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just one last closing comment, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds?
You know, in response to Counselor Lehman's concerns about this being some kind of a lobbying effort, immediately after this occurred, both on social media and elsewhere, the city was bombarded with wanting to know why, how we got here, and what's going to happen. And so we have taken care of that. The interesting thing is, as you go on social media, those same people that wanted all the information are now complaining that somehow the city is lobbying. And you know what? If you have that concern, then by all means, do what you believe you need to do. Because I fully believe that this city staff has done what it morally believes it needed to do. And I will stand behind that 100%.
Well, I think the morals and ethics and vitality of it all, especially being professionals. Last night, during the Shakopee Public Utilities meeting, right during the meeting, a sitting commissioner posted twice on social media about information putting out in regard to defending, right during the meeting. And I was pretty appalled at that. But this will soon be over, a decision will be made. Probably the best thing that we really haven't talked about, and then we're going to just move on. I think, and I look back at this, I think one of the best things that we're doing is leaving it up for the voters, letting them choose. And I think that's highly important in this whole discussion. Let the voters choose. And that's of high value. So, thank you all. Let's move ahead then to 10A1, the transfer of city-owned property to the EDA. Michael, welcome back.
Getting this booted up here. May I begin, Mayor and Council? So this is a transfer of property currently owned by the city over to the EDA. As you all remember, the city should only have property in its name for parks, recreation, city facilities, et cetera. As part of the due diligence, Seagate's in the process right now of selling that building. It was found that there's a large number of parcels that are in the city's name. They were originally identified in the city's name because that was a park and ride, which has since been abandoned. It's now actually being used as part of Seagate's parking. So to clean that up, we are requesting council to transfer these properties over to the EDA so that once this building is sold, we can have some participation. So this is the entrance drive to Seagate off of Eagle Creek. So that is owned by the city. The pond is owned by the city. That's their stormwater facility. And then you can see there are two parking lot portions that are Seagate's property. And then an old city right away. There was a city road at one point that ran through this property when land was acquired by MinDOT for 169. You can see the parcels. So part of it is still in the city's name, but it's actually MinDOT right away now. And then these are the parcels that were left over. So we propose these be transferred over to the EDA.
A little cleaning up of a lot. And I asked a question of staff about whether this, the lot is not even buildable from that aspect of, I'm trying to think of what we really have. And we don't, in the end, I heard that we don't really have anything.
Well, Mayor and Council, we have two parking lots and an entrance to their facility and the stormwater pond.
All right. Questions of staff, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, my, one of the concerns I have about the action being requested is the stormwater holding pond, that's going to be an ongoing stormwater pond, I would assume, to where the city has control of that, where our stormwater people go out there and do their thing. It seems to me that the rest of our stormwater ponds are the city's to maintain and make sure they're functioning properly. Why would we want this one to be in the EDA's hands and not in the city's hands?
So, Mayor and Council, the majority of our ponds are actually not necessarily in the city's name. We went away from that, doing outlets. They're part of people's personal property, their backyards. The mayor, for one, the stormwater pond in his area is actually in his backyard. And he, all he and his neighbors own part of it. So this has a stormwater and drainage utility easement on top of it. Whenever Seagate decides to sell this property and the EDA were to transfer its property to the new owner, we would still maintain that access easement and stormwater easement for it.
Okay. And then somewhere in this document, it talks about redevelopment. And what are we, what's getting redeveloped?
Mayor and Council, at some point, Seagate will get redeveloped. That building has changed of use. And so they have it on the market right now. It was built as a drive manufacturing facility and research facility. That business has moved on. And so whoever buys it will end up with doing some sort of redevelopment. They will not be making small thumb drives, et cetera, at that facility.
Do we have a looker on this property?
Mayor and Council, we have monthly meetings with Seagate. There are three parties that have signed NDAs with them. And we'll know that their goal is to have the property disposed by June 30th of next year. They are in the process right now of moving their people to Bloomington.
So my last question is, by putting this red area into the hands of the EDA in the future, will we be using that as a bargaining chip to give it away for free for some different use or something?
Mayor and Council, I mean, it'll depend on who the user is. I mean, it's one of the, there are easements for them to be able to access, but having it in the EDA's name will make it easier. When Seagate picks a user, we'll be able to at least be involved in that discussion. They've been very good. The mayor did write a letter to the chairman and CEO of Seagate when they announced they were leaving and said that the city, this, you know, this was a TIF, I think 15 or 20 years ago. We had some involvement with this company. We want to see that the user that goes in there is not some kind of warehouse or whatever, but is high-paying jobs like Seagate had. They were in the 7,500, $75,000, $100,000 range. And that our goal would be to work with them on a potential user that would use that property at its highest and best use. So this is another leverage tool that we would have.
So my last question, Mayor, is what's the difference from a leverage position, whether it's a city-owned or EDA-owned?
Well, Mayor and Council, again, the city's not supposed to be using its property as leverage. By statute, we're supposed to be using property for a specific purpose. So this was a park and ride. The park and ride is long and gone. City holding property for sale or transfer is supposed to be in the EDA's name.
Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Kurski. Is there any value in this as a maintaining as a transit option or for the county or for MVTA?
I couldn't hear you.
I can't hear it. Can you recite or fix your headset? We couldn't hear that.
I'm asking if the property would have any value as a transit site again? Or would the county use it for transit or MVTA?
Mayor and Council, the MVTA has a separate transit lot now. They don't use this facility. And actually, the bus stop has been moved over to Canterbury because that's where all the users are.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff? Let's proceed. Counselor Brennan?
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R 2020-119, transferring certain parcels from the city of Shakopee to the city, the Shakopee Economic Development Authority. Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion? You know, I think that Seagate doesn't own this, the city. We're going to put it in the EDA. I'm pretty sure we'll see this back. Once a user, new user is found for that building, there'll be discussion and we'll just see how that goes. Counselor Lehman?
What year did Seagate's TIF district expire?
Mayor and Council, I believe 95, and it was eight years. So that makes it probably around 2003, 2004.
All right. Thank you.
Very successful TIF, and it paid off early. Other discussion on the motion? Discussion, discussion by voice, vote?
Councilmember Whiting?
Aye.
Councilmember Lehman?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. Thank you all. Motion passes. Let's move ahead to 10A2.
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes?
Can I take a, could we, can I make a motion to take a five-minute break?
Second.
I have a motion for a five-minute recess. And a second, there would be no discussion by voice vote.
Councilmember Whiting?
Aye.
Councilmember Lehman?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. We stand in recess for five minutes.
It would either be at 20% of the units at 50% AMI or 40% of the units at 60% AMI. And perhaps Mr. Maloney can answer that question.
Hello, Brian Maloney, Assistant Development Manager with Vitus, the developer on this proposed project. To answer your question, Mr. Mayor, it would be 40%, at 60% AMI would be the restriction on the property.
Okay. Thank you.
But that would be, and sorry, one clarification, that would be, that's the minimum standard that we would be required for the tax credits, but we 100% of the units at the property will be affordable and continue to be affordable for a minimum of 20 years.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, Counselor Whiting said that we are fixing up this property and I'm not sure that's correct. Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Maybe I misstated that, but I didn't mean we are fixing it, but the building owner needs, you know, they need to fix up properties at a certain point.
Right, right. They're fixing it up using revenue at a decent rate through us, I guess. But we're not repaying these bonds, they are. And the tax credits aren't coming from us directly, or are they? But rather are coming from the state?
Counselor Member Lehman, they are coming from the state. They are not coming from the city directly.
Okay.
Other questions? If not, we do have a motion and a second on the table. Further discussion? Discussion?
I have a, I have a statement. I just think that affordable housing for seniors is very much needed in the community. So I am grateful that we have the opportunity to support this project.
Thank you, Counselor Brennan. Further discussion? By voice, vote then?
Counsel, Counselor Member Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Member Lehman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Member Contreras?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you very much. Good luck on your project. Moving ahead then to 10B1 Ridge Creek Park and Prior Lake Outlet Channel Project. And Steve is here to present. Welcome.
Good evening again, Mayor and Councilmembers. Typically at this point, when we ask for plan approval and to authorize bidding, it's typically a consent agenda item. It's a little more involved project. It's not a standard reconstruction project. So we did want to bring it back to you to make sure the vision is what we had actually built and that the funding is where we want to be, et cetera. So when we step back a little bit and look at the project, we had a, the 2018 Park Master Plan with the Ridge Creek Park Vision Plan. From there, we added this project into the 2019 CIP. And we hired the consultant in 2019 as well to develop the plans and specifications. Through that, we reestimated the project. And about July of this year, we saw that we were expecting a cost escalation. That Arrow shouldn't be there. Apologize for that. So we had additional discussions during the capital improvement planning. And then again, with the ultimate approval of this project in the 2021 Capital Improvement Plan. So tonight, it's October 6th, and we are asking you to consider the plans and authorize biddings. And if approved, we would proceed with the bidding in the fall, this fall yet, and potentially start construction yet before winter. There is some winter work that we can do out there with the creek. So with that, I wanted to step through a couple of things that we've spoken about before. And when we looked at the 2021 CIP update, we looked at basically the Park Development Fund with and without this, with and without this project. It's an expensive project. We're looking at total project costs, just over $5 million. The next slide. So the Ridge Creek Vision Plan, the middle part with all the letters on it, the plan that dates back a couple of years, I guess, at this point. We looked at doing some boardwalk, a regional trail, realigning the Prior Lake Outlet Channel and having some amenities and features to enhance the environmental type of park in this area. Some of the specific visions that we were looking at would be a paved multi-use trail. Again, the, this also shows the realigned Prior Outlet Channel, basically just a creek for the most part. The next slide actually shows a boardwalk. So we have substantial boardwalk planned with this project through the environmental area. And one of the amenities that was developed with Kurski leading the, with Mr. Kurski leading the way on the vision planning would be, some of the amenities, one would be this overlook area. So that is the, you know, architectural renderings, again, from the planning study. The next slide, this is where it gets beautiful for me. It goes to black and white and certified plans and makes a lot more sense to me at this point. But tonight, this would be the, generally the title sheet of the plan. We're ready to proceed with bidding. The next, the next plan, it's a snip, it's a snapshot out of, I gotta see how many plans are here. There's 42 plan sheets here, but we typically don't bring the entirety of a plan set for your approval. We bring a snapshot of what these black and white lines look like. So here, I wanted to highlight a couple of things. Again, there's, there's generally three components to this project, main components. We are, we are realigning the Prior Lake Outlet Channel, the P-Lock, with some storm sewer improvements. It's about 2,800 feet of a new outlet channel in the tune of about 1.9 million. The second component would be a regional trail. There's about 3,000 feet for about 1.3 million. And then about 2,600 foot of boardwalk and amenities. There's, that's about 1.86 million. So that gives you an idea what the money would be spent on with improvements. And the next slide shows the actual costs and budgeting. I just talked about on the left, the breakdown of what the costs would be. Overall, again, it's a $5.1 million project. And the funding that we have, we have some cost sharing through grants. We have a DNR grant. We have watershed grants. And then a big part of the funding would be through the Park Development Fund and the Storm Drainage Fund. And then a component of $50,000 for the Tree Replacement Fund. Again, costs matching with the funding of about just over $5 million. So that is my very brief project overview. I would stand for any questions and then I would respectfully ask your consideration of, you know, the order of the council here. Thank you.
Steve, thank you. Questions of staff? I've been, last time we saw this, and one thing that bothers me is the expense. And it has, it has moved up substantially in the last couple of years. I do feel this is a very important regional park for our, you know, for everybody, but a tremendous enhancement for our east end, especially for South Bridge and all that infill area that has happened around it. So my, most of my concern is that the Prior Lake Outlet Channel has, the flow has increased in the last several years by, they're just flowing more water. And the outlet drainage is seeing more water than it ever has and more on a constant basis. A couple of years ago, we had the overflow and damage to County Road 16. And then again, on another storm, we had a blowout of some trees where it was trying to make a natural bend where it caused a lot of problems. So I really view this as a storm water project with a park over it. And pretty intensive about what we're trying to do with the water flow. We're trying to have it slow down and infiltrate and meander rather than a right turn. I'm just amazed that the, the cost sharing on the storm water aspect isn't higher. Because that's how I really feel. It's a storm water project with a park on top. And I get that trails and amenities are expensive too, but we really think that the storm drainage is at 1.6 on this, Steve?
Mayor and councilmembers, we have a list of about 100 line items that make up this project, from grading to plannings to trail to literary receptacles. And when we categorize all of them, this is the breakdown. If we were to only build the channel and storm sewer improvements and eliminate the boardwalk and eliminate the trail, the channel and storm sewer improvements would be $1.9 million. So there you have it.
It is what it is. I get it. Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I actually agree with you on this one. And I think the overall price is too expensive, too high. And I never did like the corn crib overlook. I'm not against having some kind of an overlook, but I think it looks really tacky.
Okay. Others?
I have a question. Is there a breakdown of what the boardwalk is compared to the corn crib overlooks? At that 1,800, how much is the corn crib overlooks and how much is the boardwalk?
Mayor and councilmembers, Counselor Member Brennan, the corn crib, it's about $125,000. The structure was about $75,000. The electrical and et cetera was another $30,000. And the piling that's needed, it added up to about $125,000. The rest would be mostly boardwalk. So you're looking at, you know, 1.7 plus million for boardwalk.
I have another question. What's the maintenance like on a boardwalk in Corn crib?
Mayor and councilmembers, I'm trying to think around town, do we have boardwalk? Not, I don't think we do in Shakopee, but other communities do. The boardwalk is made of materials like your deck. Your, just your standard home deck. So generally, you're looking, you know, at the life expectancy of a deck. Typically, you're good to get 15 years, 20 years. Depending on the materials, you might get 25 years out of it. But, you know, it's a, it's a lot of boards, it's a lot of wood. And there's definitely some maintenance that goes into it, right? So once we, if we build this project, we got to start planning for that maintenance and programming budget for the maintenance. And eventually, you know, we're probably looking at some board replacement. So, so it's more than a Batuminous Trail would be. So it's notable.
It's got some boardwalks in it.
Other questions? Counselor Whiting?
Yeah, one thing about this project that's different from many other park projects is it does have the storm water aspect, but that you can check, you know, dump into another fund or at least get money out of it. Of course, it's incredibly expensive. But if you look at it from just the park point of it, without the storm water, it's, it's within the range of building a new park. But the boardwalk is, does change that quite a bit. I never liked the corn crib, but, you know, you guys talked me into it. Otherwise, you know, it is what it is. It's expensive.
Mayor and council, I just would remind you that, so this is over three years ago, I think, that Lenara came forward with this project. And it was not fully designed at that point. And I think we, we had a picture at that time and we estimated it $3 million. They did donate over $1 million in land. So we not only got the land for this park, but for the regional intention basin behind it that they contributed to the city. And unlike a lot of other developers, to their credit, they also contributed about $550,000 in park dedication on top of the land because they saw, I think, along with the council at the time, a vision of creating not only a park for their residents, but a signature park for the community. And so this has been a long, long, long process. And I would hope we could move it forward because this, again, this came from park dedication. There's another subdivision looking on the other side of this that'll contribute about another $1 million in park dedication and will not have its own park and would actually use this as their park. So I think it's, they're waiting to see what happens with this. And I think they'll move forward once they know this park's moving forward.
Other questions? Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, if I remember, when we started down this road, it was roughly $3 million was what the estimate was. And now we're at five. So.
We should have approved it a year and a half ago at three then.
Without the corn crib.
Without the, the corn crib is a small piece of this in the end. I, you know, the breakout of the, of the costs here. And certainly, if this gets approved and goes out for bid, one would hope it would be a very competitive situation. I know that we've bid at all our projects over the last year, have all come under budget, I believe, except for one. You know, it's a, a good time and I'm, if this passes, I really hope to see positive bids. And obviously, if it's higher, we have an opportunity to say no. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, wood is really high right now. So you might want to put in a couple of alternatives on what the boardwalk material could be. Because I think the wood pricing is up. Maybe you'll get the plastic decking cheaper or something.
Yep, Mayor and councilmembers, we'll do that.
Okay. Okay.
And there's less, less maintenance long-term on the plastic decking too.
Further comments, questions? Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just requesting bids, so we don't know what we're looking at yet. This is just an estimate here. So I would make a motion to approve Resolution R 2020-114, approving plans and ordering the advertisement for bids for the Ridge Creek Park and Prior Lake Outlet Channel Improvements Project PR 19-001.
I have a motion. I have a motion.
I'll second it. Contreras?
Okay, I, second from Counselor Contreras. Further discussion? We're gonna, we're gonna include a alternate on the wood material? Is that included? Is that assumed?
Yes, with the, with the additional information, yes, the second.
Okay. And that's okay with the motion maker?
Yes, it is.
All right. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice, vote?
Counselor Member Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Member Lehman?
Negative.
Counselor Member Brennan?
Nate, no.
Counselor Member Contreras?
We could not hear you.
Aye.
Counsel, Mayor Mars?
Aye. I believe that motion passes three to two. And will await bids. All right. Thank you very much. Next up, the city bill list is in front of us for our review. Are there any questions on that? If not, we would start with our liaison report. Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, just let me grab my, my items where now I have. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Do you mind if you, oh, sorry, I found them. I just put them on the wrong side. Sorry. Okay, for the school board. First, so on the September 22nd, the state of the district was presented where highlights of items of interest, it was broken down into four, four points, highlights and items of interest, return to school, operating levy and question and answers. My main take home that I felt was the refunding of the construction debt on two bonds. Bond 2020D, so the refunding, and that was a refunding for 2012A bond. The savings there was, sorry, let me, let me go back really quick. So refunding is just like refinancing a mortgage, but instead it's, of course, refinancing of a construction debt with lower interest rates. Construction, yes. And then, so there's two that will, that this is going to happen on. So that would be 2020D, and that's the refunding of the 2012A bond, saving us 1.2, 1.22 million dollars. And the second one is 2020E, that's a combination of three bonds, saving us $3.62 million and repaying the debt during the life of these bonds. Second thing there, we have, let's see, sorry, I'm just trying to keep track of everything. In, in October this month, there will be a, a rapid planning workshop will be held online to help the city's consultant better understand the ways that biking and walking to school can be improved. If you would like to participate in this workshop, you can contact our planner, our senior planner, which is Peggy, Peggy Su Imihi. And you can reach her at P-I-M-I-H-Y@shakopeeimin.gov. And this, you know, again, is the city working with the school. So I thought that was something I would love, you know, wanted to bring up. And last but not least for school, save the date Thursday, October 22nd, from 7:00 to 8:30 would be coffee with the superintendent. And that will be held at the Shakopee Public School District Office at the Welcome Center. Shakopee Diversity Alliance, working on putting together the Fall 2020 event. The next scheduled event is October 18th from 3:00 to 5:00. And that's going to be the Shakopee People of Color Together, a community listening session. And this space is aimed to bring together our community of color to connect and share their stories. They want to amplify BIPOC, which is Black Indigenous and People of Color, voices in order to bring meaning needed, bring changes needed for Shakopee to be a place where BIPOC folk thrive. Registration is required and you can go to www.chakopeediversity.org. After the event, they will bring together their notes to create a high-level report to present to council on changes that might be needed at our schools, police department and local government. And my last, for Equity Team, the last meeting that we had scheduled, unfortunately, was canceled in September. And the next one that's coming up should be October 25th. And that is, you know, our next community engagement event. And that should be on the 25th around 12:30. And at the last meeting, we worked on the rental housing ordinance, preservation and maintenance program and how to do this equitably for everyone. And that pretty much wraps up my liaison report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. 169 Corridor Coalition, a couple of things of note. We, there was a meeting at the Regional Training Center with Representative Craig on 282 Project and 12 out in Jordan. The representatives there was the mayor of Jordan, 169 Corridor Coalition Chair, our technical guy. And that went really well. I guess she spent more time there than what was actually allocated. It was limited because of the COVID. So we had a follow-up on that and how that went. She's very receptive to that project, so that's a good thing. We went over the debriefing, if you will, of the 41169 event, how that went considering the COVID masking and spacing. Thought it went well myself. And then we discussed the Transportation Alliance fly-in, which is actually not a fly-in, it's a Zoom thing from COVID. We had representation from both the Transportation Alliance, the Corridor Coalition, Scott County. I did not participate. I couldn't take the day off of work to do it in the middle of the day and it was a two-day thing, so, but we were well represented. I made sure our, our views were there. Scale, I attended a scale meeting, again, Zoom call-in. And a couple of things from the scale that come to light is, you know, there's, there's talk of hiring a full-time consultant. There's talk of hiring a full-time data analysis position. And, and we're still beating around the bush on a whole booklet of priorities or a couple of defined priorities for state legislators. And there's really not a true consensus yet. I'm kind of on a size of, side of having your key things up front because I think the state legislators are going to be pretty busy with a balanced budget and priorities and, and COVID issues. So I think it's going to be easy to bog them down with a laundry list. I don't think it's going to get the attention that a couple of key specific issues would. And on the lobbying side, you know, I, I personally kind of think, and this is just my view, not necessarily representative of council, so it's a good question for this body. You know, Scale's original mission is to create efficiencies within Scott County. And, and the purpose of that is to, to save tax dollars throughout Scott County and, and make it easier for everybody to work together. And if we're hiring a bunch of full-time people, that costs money. So I'm, I'm a little not too sure on that. So I tried to, I, I understand the lobbyist portion. If it's something specific where you could hire a lobbyist for key items, and one example would be the development impact fees, which Shakopee and Prior Lake have both signed on to supporting each other on. Or if it's a transportation issue that most of the scale members are on board with, that you want to really push forward with. So, you know, I could support that, but I'm not to the point of a full-time lobbyist without knowing what you're lobbying for specifically. The data analysis person, I guess I need more information on that. I'll have to ask Bill Reynolds, maybe he could enlighten me because apparently there's a lot of support from a public safety standpoint on gathering the various calls, mutual aids, who's receiving, who's requesting locations of where calls centers are and, and numbers and data trends and these types of things. Might be good data to have. I don't know if, you know, I know Shakopee has its own data. I, you know, so I guess I don't know, you know, where, where the importance is on that. I might be missing that part, but maybe, maybe Mr. Reynolds could give us a better idea on that topic.
Yeah, I can, Counselor Lehman. Thank you. This is a position that was originally brought forward about two years ago. There was some debate at that time. I, as part of my role as Service Delivery Chair, I was not necessarily in favor of the position, frankly, much for a lot of the reasons you've outlined, Counselor Lehman. But the decision was to go ahead and have this position hired for the county. In retrospect, there was a lot of really good data that came out of what she was doing up until she left. And unfortunately, she left before we could then talk about, well, now that we have the data, you know, we want to be able to present that in a format that people can understand and then we can make decisions based upon it. So the decision was made to pause filling the position. filling the position currently, although all administrators said that in retrospect, we do believe that there is some value in this data, because essentially, for example, what she was working on, uh, right before she left was, was taking a look at the mutual aid calls from each communities, which essentially is a good indication as to whether or not each community is properly funding its own police forces. So if we have, for example, a lot of calls that Shakopee is out assisting other communities, uh, because they don't have, uh, police officers available at the time, that mutual aid, if that, if that is lopsided, if you will, well, then that is showing that there's an issue there that should be addressed by that particular community. Uh, but again, because of COVID and because of generally where we are in the process of, of, of looking at that position, the administrators, uh, again, saw value in the data, but decided to, you know, we would recommend taking a pause on it. Uh, you know, I, I'm in favor of the position as it stands now, um, but much like your comments in regards to a, a lobbyist, you know, on specific issues, I see the value in this, on this specific issue. Now, a long-term hire for other things that we're not aware of yet, you know, that goes to kind of your arguments with the lobbyist. And I, you know, I certainly see the value for this. Uh, I have committed to be in favor of the position, but you know, I still have concerns, much like, much like you expressed.
All right, well, hopefully I'm not too far off based on where I'm going here, but, you know, it's, it's hard sometimes because you don't know where your council sits on specific issues like this. So I'm just using my best judgment, I guess.
I believe, uh, I believe Shakopee was opposed to that analyst the last time around.
Yep.
Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, I had voted against it, um, the last time around, but if the information, it just seemed like a lot of gathering information and not doing much with the information. So if that's changed, I don't know that, but at that point in time last year, that's why I voted against it.
Okay. Thank you all. Let's see, uh, oh, Counselor Lehman, does that complete you?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Whiting?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Minnesota Valley Transit Met last week. Um, the big concern and talk was, uh, we had the Met Council with us, uh, talking about the Redline, which is a transit way that goes from Apple Valley Transit Center to the Mall of America. So Apple Valley is an opt-out, obviously using the Minnesota Valley Transit, and this route was funded originally through CTIB. Uh, for those of you that know, well, that was the County Transit Improvement Board, and they funded this, this transit line 50%. Well, that got dissolved. The CTIB went away, and then the Met Council took over the funding mechanism of it. So what happened is, uh, MVTA has been running this route very successfully, and it actually makes up 25% of our employee base that works with that route. Um, so Met Council came in and gave us a 30-day notice that they're taking over the route. And remember, this is an opt-out community, and this is, uh, they've labeled it as a bus rapid transit route when it doesn't meet the legal definition federally or in the state as a rapid transit route. Um, and they're just kind of taking our 25% of the MVTA employees for granted and, and a too-bad kind of thing. So there's, uh, some concern, and there may be some legal challenges to that, uh, being an opt-out community and not meeting that federal or state definition of a rapid transit route or BRT. So we're looking at that, um, and looking at some system-wide study, uh, system-wide study and updating that. Other than that, that's about all I have.
Thank you very much, Counselor Brennan.
Um, I went to the Unified Transit Plan Committee, and we had been on hold since March because of the COVID, um, COVID issue, but we just finally started meeting again. It's a, it's to develop the transit plan for the Scott County. Um, and, um, we had MVTA, Luther from MVTA was there and did some speaking and talked about ridership that's occurred in, since COVID. Um, and also, we, they had SmartLink there, and SmartLink has been trying to come up with new ways of doing things to improve, um, their, their viability, um, like providing, um, meal deliveries for people that are, are stuck at home, not, not like Uber Eats or whatever, but these are for, um, people that are really not able to get out and, and out into the community. Um, so I, I don't know where they are there on that. Um, they said they were really affected by the MRCI change in how they do things. Um, their ridership really dropped on that, and I, I can attest to that because my daughter no longer goes to MRCI and uses SmartLink. So, um, so anyways, we're, we're working on, um, the Unified Transit Plan and restarting it. So there should be more information coming up on that. Um, I had the SPUC meeting yesterday. Trying to talk and, talk and do things. Um, SPUC meeting yesterday, um, and we had, Ilerz was there to talk about the water connection charge and the trunk water connection, trunk connection fee charges. Um, so I had made a motion to have the commission meet with the, um, city council to talk about these, these fees and, and implementing the fees before they're actually implemented, to see how that will affect the city as a whole. Um, so Mr. Koshyer, um, who's the interim, interim, um, Utilities Manager, will be contacting, um, Mr. Reynolds to set up a time for the, a city council and commission meeting to talk about these fees. Um, we also talked about, um, water quality, um, and Steve provided information on that earlier. Um, and I also attended the Equity Meeting with Angelica, so that was my first meeting to do that. Okay, I don't have anything else.
Counselor Brennan, I was reading the packet for the utility and the Ilerz analysis, and they're recommending putting in treatment into the, they had it for 2025 and 2030, and if I remembered right, that the dollar amount was $14 million. Is that?
Yes.
And then they suggested they, that the utility would, would bond for that?
Yeah, the, um, the water treatment that they use is for, specifically for the wells that are attached to it. Um, so it's not a greater wide treatment facility, a, a citywide one, it's, it's specific to a well. Um, and that is my, that's my understanding also on what you're concluding.
Okay. Well, we'll see what comes of that.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, for my mayor's report, um, we heard an excellent presentation from the League of Minnesota Cities on our City of Excellence Award. That was great. But also, we won, uh, money.com, the former Money Magazine, uh, 30th place of the best places to live out of 50 in the entire United States. Um, that's, a whole bunch of criteria went into this, affordability, uh, entertainment obviously was a factor, too. Only Woodbury. Uh, the only other city in Min, in Minnesota was Woodbury, uh, and they ranked a little higher than Shakopee, but to be, to be called out, uh, of one of the top 50 places in the United States to live, I thought was pretty awesome. Great award. Um, remember, it's Fire Prevention Week, and, uh, the Shakopee Fire Department has some great videos online. You can check that out. Tomorrow, you can pay your parking tickets with Coffee with a Cop, uh, at 10:00 AM to noon in the parking lot right here. Um, I just think the Police Department has a great outreach in trying to reach people and talk with them and just have a conversation. I think that's great. Fall cleanup, October 24th, Saturday, 7:30 to 11:30. I think we've made some adjustments. Um, no moving or box trucks, no trailers larger than 16 feet, and no commercial drop-offs. Uh, we're trying to accommodate more people. I think, uh, you know, these cleanup days are very successful. Over 400 residents each and every time we have these cleanups, so, um, that's great. Um, also, uh, Saturday, October 24th, our Park and Rec Department, Spooky Family Fun Night at Lyons Park. It starts at 3 till 8. This is a registration, uh, is required, and I did talk to our director today before the meeting, and he said spots are filling up. So even during COVID, take some extra precautions and everybody be safe, but, uh, Spooky Family Fun Night at Lyons Park, Saturday, October 24th. So, um, that is my mayor's report. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to touch a little bit on the Money Magazine Award. Um, that's an exceptionally significant award. Uh, for those of us that aren't native Minnesotans and have been around a bit, uh, making that list is something. Uh, it really is. And, and what, what they looked at was economy, job growth, employment opportunities, cost of living, cost of living, there we go, uh, quality of schools, health, safety, racial diversity, and economic diversity, and out of 1,890 cities. 1,890 cities, we're number 30. That is, that is incredibly, uh, uh, that just, I don't know how that doesn't make you smile.
No.
That's just an incredible award. It's an incredible, uh, uh, recognition for this community, and, uh, everyone should be proud of that. And, and, and you know, we're, we're in a time of strife politically and, 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 you know, locally here now, especially on this, this referendum issue, but you know, think about that, you know, think about that. That is phenomenal, and everyone should be, should, should look at that with some degree of pride. That's all I have, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Counselor Lehman?
I hate to say it, but Money Magazine is wrong. I mean, I don't live here because it's 30th. I live here because it's one, it's first.
Well, uh, I did talk to their marketing guy today. Uh, they don't have, and I like an official award, like a trophy or anything. Um, they're, you know, we can print out our thing and put it in our trophy case. I think we should do that. Um, but, uh, I looked at the criteria and just, it's pretty diverse of all the things they looked at, right? So, um, I think that's pretty cool for our community. And unsolicited, we had, it's not like you apply for that. They look at you from the outside without any input.
Yep.
And I thought that was pretty cool, so. Great. Um, all right. So if we're all done with that, then we would move to our closed session and, uh, if we could entertain a motion. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to go into closed session for labor discussions.
And that would be pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Chapter 13D, .03, for the purpose of discussing union strategy.
Correct.
Counselor Brennan?
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second by Counselor Brennan. Further discussion? Discussion by voice, vote?
Councilmember Whiting?
Aye.
Councilmember Lehman?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye.
We stand in, to go to closed session, and if you just give us a minute.